And. We begin, I asked the town manager to read the meeting, announce the meeting by a cost.
Yes, thank you. As you hopefully heard, whether you're tuning in. Online or if you're here, this meeting is being recorded. So for folks that are here. If you're making comments, if you don't mind stepping over to the podium. Whether you are making a comment online or here, if you could just state your name. And if you're a resident. What street you live on, for the record, if you're. Not in town, you're with a company or something like that, maybe state your company, just so we have some context. The meeting at the, at the, at the start of the meeting will have a public comment period. So if you wish to make a comment at that time, for something that's not on the agenda. You can, you can raise your hand here, raise your hand online. And. If we for some reason get interrupted online, it hasn't happened in a while, knock on wood. I'll just cut, I'll cut the feed, we'll boot it back up with a disseminate a login for people to rejoin, so we can carry on with, with the meeting. But otherwise.
And also. Announce the. If you're on Zoom.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it looks like everybody's done it so far, but if I don't have your name, I might send you a message on Zoom. If you're not making a comment, just ask that you turn off your video, it just makes the recording easier to follow. And yeah, feel free to message me as well on Zoom. If you have a question, I'll try to answer as, as quickly and directly as I can.
Okay, thank you. So we will start with our public comment period. If anybody in the town hall wishes to comment, or is there anybody?
Nobody's indicated that they have any comments.
Okay. We will next go to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I think before, before you vote, I did note on the agenda, I put it in red, so this was not announced, but.
This is partially for your consideration, Mr. Mayor, but there are two potential nominees for the pool committee. That you may consider adding to the agenda at the request of the pool committee chair.
I just make a motion.
Do you want to, do you want to add it?
Yes, I want to make a motion to add the two people. That have been requested by that, that's apt to join the pool committee.
Well, no, which.
Add it to the agenda, sorry.
That's a motion to amend the agenda, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we need a second for that. Are we all in favor of the amendment? Thank you. Okay, good. All right, sorry. Okay, so there's been a motion to approve the agenda as an amendment. And this is my second, is your discussion. All those in favor? All those in favor? So the next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Which contains these two nominations now. You, this isn't usually been the procedure, it's the recommendation of the pool committee chair.
Is it your recommendation going on?
Right, and so. I mean, usually it's vetted.
He has vetted this and we did talk about it.
Right, but I usually vet it and, and we, we put it in the context of. Who's on the committee? So I would request that.
You want to wait until next month?
Yes, I request that you.
Fine, so you'll.
Get you, get you. Disapprove the consent agenda. Well. Well, somebody has, somebody has to make a motion.
Okay, motion to not approve the consent agenda at this time.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next item is public hearing motion. To consider a permit application amendment submitted by Daniel Brammer Wardig and Rebecca La Madrid. To replace the driveway at the property located at fifty-six thirteen Worldwood Place. The applicant is seeking a variance from the town code. Which requires all new or replacement driveways to be constructed. Of permeable materials due to the slope of the existing driveway. So we will begin, this is a hearing before the town Somerset Council. With the consideration of a permit application, correct, amendment submitted by Daniel Brammer Wardig and Rebecca Lametrid. To replace the driveway at the property located at fifty-six thirteen Worldwood Place. The applicant is seeking a variance from the town code, which requires all new replacement driveways to be constructed. Of permeable materials due to the slope of the existing driveway. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant and their representatives will present their application. Or comment on the staff findings. Next, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application. The council should introduce all findings of fact during their comments or questions. Next, other interested parties, including town residents, will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff only. Or make comments to the council applicant or staff. Then the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing should be completed and the record closed. No new information shall be considered or submitted for the record after this point. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permanent decision. We now begin the hearing with the presentation of the staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, a couple of things that I wanted to make note of before I get into the meat of the report, but. The draft that I had sent out indicated that notice wasn't sent and I, I poorly worded it because. I, I copied from last month, I'll admit. So there were just a few lines that were. Copied from last month that weren't really applicable to this meeting. So I just wanted to note for the record that this. Specific hearing was, was noticed. To the abutting, adjoining and neighboring properties. So. The, as the mayor, as the mayor noted, the applicants had undergone construction at their property. Last year and last month, the council considered. An application for a deck in their rear yard. And got sort of a primer on this. They, they'd like to replace their driveway, but because of. The way that their driveway is sloped, I think when we were writing the. Writing the code, we were imagining a driveway that goes up into a garage, but theirs is actually sloped the opposite way. And so for that reason, it was impractical to. To put in the permeable driveway, but the applicants have put in a trench drain that captures the water from the driveway. As an alternate, as an alternative solution. To the impervious surface. So. The. The, the applicants submitted an argument for the impracticality of the permeable driveway. And has proposed some remediation of it. The council's consideration is essentially whether the proposal satisfies the variance requirements, the town code. Which are that. The strict and literal application of the code would result in peculiar or unusual practical difficulties to the owner on the lot. Due to exceptional narrowness, shalliness. Shape, topographical conditions or other extraordinary situations. Or conditions particular, peculiar to the specific parcel of property. And it must be for the minimal reasonably necessary to avoid the conditions. Or situations. I do note that we have the applicants here. Daniel and Rebecca, thank you for joining us. I'm assuming by the waves that you're able to hear us okay. Doug is also here. Doug, I don't know if you had anything to add to my report. I'm sorry, yeah, Doug, Doug Lo Meyer, who's our town building administrator. See him audio, but.
Hey Matt, all right. The application also includes a driveway apron permit to be constructed per the town's apron detail.
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarifying that. So in addition to the driveway itself, they're replacing the driveway. So that concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Now, the applicants, welcome. You wish to comment on the report, present something, or. Have your own comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff of the town of Somerset, and thank you, council, town council members for hearing our application. There was a little bit of a primer, as, as Matt mentioned in last month's session. I, I would just say that there are actually two factors that are driving the. Application for the variance. So one is, yes, the uniqueness of how the, the whole lot. Really slopes towards the house. So before construction, we, one of the main things that we planned. As part of the renovation was just better storm management. On the lot because we were having flooding issues before the renovation. Because again, as I mentioned, the whole lot slants towards the, the construction. So, so that, that's always been a priority for us, managing the stormwater for, for our own interests on our property, so that we don't have that flooding. Some of the work that has already been performed is, is proving positive, right? We, we have not had any flooding in our basement. So far, knock on wood. But the, the other factor here that I think is important to highlight is. That our house sits on a slope that needed to be. I guess secured with a series of terraces that were recommended and designed by a geotechnical engineer. And in their report, the geo. Geotechnical engineer mentioned that they, well, recommended that no additional weight. Be, you know, weight be put on, 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 on the soil of, of this lot, right? And so we've, we've. So we've, so that's kind of the other, the other part of the, the impermeable solutions. And we've, we've, of course, made installed drains that are already in place. That are managing the stormwater. So those are just the two factors. I will stop there to see if there are any comments, the, the builder or the landscape architect. Go ahead, sorry.
The landscaping. That concludes your presentation.
I, I would just say if the landscaping firm that's, Densfield is online, if there's anything that they would like to add to our presentation.
And. And I see you are with us, so. Feel free to. Go ahead, Ed.
I, I don't know that there's anything that I really need to add to that. We have a problem with adding weight to the soil if we're letting the water infiltrate. We're of course making the soil heavier. And that's the big issue for us and why we're asking for the variance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council President, sir, can you, let me ask you. Did you, did the town, do you understand?
No, I was just asking who the speaker was.
Council President, sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
That's our bar.
You have no questions?
Counselor, no.
I guess I, I'm just wondering, I've never heard this before, that. You can't put, you can't make the. You know, make it heavier, make the, the ground heavier. Is that a thing?
Yeah, let's ask.
Who are you asking?
I guess, I don't know who I'm asking that question to. You know. I guess Doug.
Is that a reasonable?
Doug, is that reasonable?
So this is my, my, I'm not an expert. But I, we did study the report from the, from the geotechnical engineers and what they said is that the slope. On our property or the, the soil layers on our property, they're not. Natural and, and they were, they were layered during construction and they were not compacted appropriately. And so therefore, before we installed, before the terraces, the retaining wall terraces were built. The slope was imminent to fail. When? God knows, but it was going to fail. And so in the report, they said just adding more weight, meaning water. Or, or, you know, heavy, very heavy construction without. Securing the slope with the retaining walls. Would accelerate the imminent failure of the slope. So while we have installed three retaining walls, that recommendation that the, the soil didn't change, right? So that, that should just be taken as, as a precautionary note. To, to, I guess, limit the amount of weight that continues to get put on, on the slope.
Thank you, but I actually wanted to hear what Doug Lo Meyer had to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm.
Thank you, that was good. Doug, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but what he, what they described makes sense. If driveway slopes towards the house. And the soils are weak. It, it, it would put more pressure on the soils adjacent to the house. So what they're explaining makes sense from a, a general civil engineering, but I'm not a geotechnical engineer.
Thank you, my only question.
Thank you, guess or ready to answer the questions?
I don't.
Has any resident or guest wish?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I will now turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion.
Where did we talk about this? We either at our last work session or at the last council meeting. My sense was that we. Appreciated the unique conditions of the property and no, no issues with, with this approach. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I was all just. Make the proposal.
No, I, I agree that this is unusual, what they're describing is an unusual situation. It's a combination of the. Driveways looking towards the house and weak soil underneath. Driveway that. Driveway doesn't make any sense.
So do you want to, do you want to have the?
Oh, can I? So, but the, the cut that they're doing for the new driveway is the same size as what they've had before.
The, the apron conforms with the town code.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's the same size, essentially the same size.
Yes.
So are you prepared? So maybe the town attorney can help you to make sure since it's low variance. For a shoe drive.
Right. I propose the council approve a permanent application amendment submitted by Daniel Brammer Wardig and Rebecca Lametrid. To replace the driveway properly located at fifty-six thirteen Worldwood Place. I guess, what do we need to say about the variance? Anything? Was that sufficient?
And that the requested variance is granted.
Okay, and the requested variance is granted.
Okay, excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there a discussion? Hearing on all those in favor. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to the applicants. Thank you for your thorough, thorough application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, town council members.
Okay, the next item is public hearing motion to consider a permit application amendment submitted by William Feeny on behalf of David and Jasmine Rosner. For the construction of a second story addition on the existing home and property located at fifty-five thirteen Greystone Street. This is a hearing before the, before the town Somerset Council for the consideration of a. Permit application amendment submitted by William Feeny. On behalf of David and Jasmine Rosner for the construction of a second story addition on the existing home at the property located. At fifty-five fifteen Greystone Street. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town staff will present their findings, submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant and their representatives will, will present the application. Next, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. The council should introduce all findings of fact during their comments or questions. Next, other interested parties, including town residents, will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff only. Or make comments to the council applicant or staff. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. No new information shall be considered or submitted for the record after this point. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. Council may make a motion on a permanent decision. We will now begin the hearing with the presentation of the staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm. The, the staff is recommending approval for the permit that's been submitted for fifty-five fifteen Greystone. Going through administrative requirements, the applicant confirmed no more than three construction vehicles will be parked in the street at a time. So compliance with the parking restrictions. They submitted and signed and submitted a house number certification. And notice was delivered to the neighbors within ten days prior to the hearing. Via first class mail and email. And also we hand delivered packages containing the notice and plans. To the abutting property, abutting neighbors. The building administrator has reviewed the plans and confirmed it complies with the town code. The proposed plans do not affect the. The square footage of the house. So it's just a second story addition on the existing house. The applicant supplied a certified letter that the existing house is twenty-five feet from the front property line. Which is equal to the established building line. The town arborist is here, so he can expand on his recommendations, but. Let's see. Well, I'm sorry, because, because it's not. Because there's no increase in the square footage, there's no tree replacement or tree protection required. And similarly, because there's not addition to the square footage of the house, no stormwater management is required. So. We are recommending approval of this project. I note that we are joined here by the property owners, David and Jasmine Rosner. So welcome, they newly moved into the town. Doug, I don't know if you have anything to add to the report for this construction project?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank.
So welcome to the Rosers. Do you wanna, if you wanted to say anything, if you could come over to. Beautiful light, so people can see. And you can all introduce yourselves and then if you want to present something or if not, you can just comment on the report.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jasmine Rosner. I'm really excited to be here. We have not yet moved into the neighborhood. It would be pending the renovations, but we are. Eager and excited to get started. As Somerset is a neighborhood we've had our eye on for. Almost five years. We have young kids, we're excited about the schools, we're excited about the pool, excited about the community. We love the house that we bought. It just, it was built in the nineteen fifties and hasn't been updated and so. A little bit more space, a little bit more modern conveniences is sort of what we're looking for there. Love the bones in it. We're not looking to do a rig, a tear down or anything like that. So it's just adding. Some bedrooms upstairs and then renovating the downstairs floor. Sorry, I need to tell everybody something here.
I don't think I can top that. I'm David. It's nice to meet you all. We had a good time at the newcomers party this summer and we're just excited to get this started and moving. So thank you. If you have questions, we're here.
Okay, do you want to say something?
Council President, sir, do you have any questions?
I, I do have one question first, just to say I. I appreciate your situation when we moved into fifties Rambler on Uppingham Street. Fifteen plus years ago and ended a bump up because, because you wanted space, so. I certainly appreciate the situation. One question I have is tree protection. This might actually be more a question for. Doug or Dr. Feather, but even if we're not changing the footprint of the house. Do we still need to? Put, put those fences around some of the trees to protect them during the construction project?
I, I didn't look at the, I didn't look at the. Project, so I have no idea. I, I, Matt was saying, since it's not an increase in the. In the, in the square footage. I, I don't know if that's in the code or not.
I guess. It's. So a thought I have would be to ask doctors, that is, to look at the property and maybe we can. Provide a, a recommendation to, that there might be some trees that just, you know, just get staked out just to protect them. And may not, may not be necessarily appropriate in your property, but that just might be.
Okay, if I get a side plane, I can look at.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
I don't know if it's appropriate to respond, but if you ever walk behind the house or in front of it, you'll notice there's this like gorgeous weepy tree in the front. And one of the things that stole us most on the property, it just has a beautiful sort of tree seed in the front. So certainly the idea is to.
I, I, I have no concern about this one. I always love it when you expand it, I was going straight up because it's so much easier for us to, to, to reply under those circumstances. But yeah. He was right, we should put protection, fencing around the trees and the property because. I can't trust your builders necessarily to be as careful as you are when building around that.
Is there any question? No question. Okay, councilor Hall, do you have any questions?
Not really, just that I did the same thing thirty-five years ago when we moved in and we, we built up, not out, but up. And it was a good way to go, so.
Council, we're back to any questions?
So are there any trees that have to be like, come, have to come down for this? That's my only question. And hopefully you guys will join the dolphin swim team. I've already put a plug into them.
To name, no, no submitted comments and nobody's indicated that they wish to make comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will now turn everything to the council president to lead the discussion, the decision.
Okay, well, I think we all seem to be in alignment that. This, this isn't, are there any questions or concerns? Any or ask? Well, okay, we'll just make a stab at this. Like they counsel approve a permit application amendment submitted by William Feeny on behalf of David and Jasmine Rosner. For the destruction of a second story addition of the existing home at the property located fifty-five fifteen Greystone Street. As part of this approval, the council requests that. The town arborist review the site plans and discuss any appropriate tree protection measures with the owners. That sound about that?
Yes, that would be fine.
That, that would just require a discussion. If you wanted to make it a little stronger, you could say implement any tree protection measures recommended by the town arborists. But you can just have a discussion if that's all, if it is necessary.
I did, I, I think we're gonna do it anyway, but implementing it is probably better.
Okay, so to implement.
Okay, why don't you read the motion so it can get a second, please?
Sure, motion to approve the request for a, a permanent amendment with the condition that the applicants implement any tree protection measures recommended by the town arborist.
Okay, is there a second? Is there discussions? Hearing on all those in favor? All those in favor. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item. Public hearing motion to consider approval of a permit application submitted by Robert Herman on behalf of thirty-six twelve LLC for the construction of a rear yard addition to the existing home, construction of a patio, construction of a front porch, and the relocation of the HVAC unit from the property located at fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey. The applicant is seeking variances of seven foot six inches and nine foot six inches from the front setback requirements for the construction of the front porch and front porch steps respectively. Okay, here we go. This is a hearing for the town Somerset Council for the consideration of a permit application submitted by Robert Herman on behalf of thirty-six twelve LLC for the construction of a rear yard addition to the existing home, construction of a patio, construction of a front porch, and the relocation of the HVAC unit from the property located at fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey. The applicant is seeking variances of seven foot six inches and nine foot six inches from the front setback requirements for the construction of the front porch and front porch steps respectively. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application of the consideration. Next, the applicant and their representatives will present their application. After that, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. The council should introduce all findings of fact during your comments or questions. Next, other interested parties, including town residents, will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff only, or make comments to the council applicant or staff. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record close. No new information shall be considered or submitted for the record after this point. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, uh, so first of all, uh, just confirming that the administrative requirements have been met for this application. Um, next, moving on to the building requirements, the town staff reviewed it and confirmed that two variances are required for uh from the town code for the proposed construction. Both of those variances uh pertain to the proposed upgrade to the to the front porch. The applicant is proposing to upgrade what's an existing front stoop into a front porch. We had a similar uh, a similar instance not that long ago. So, in in this instance, the the established building line at the property is twenty-eight feet. Um, and the town, as a reminder, doesn't provide exceptions or projections, so a variance is required for the front porch steps and the front porch itself. So, uh, the first is a variance of seven point three feet for the front porch steps. And the second is a nine point five foot variance for the front porch. Um, the furthest point is the roof of that front porch. Um, the town arborist reviewed the plans and offered a tree protection plan for the project. Um, the protection plan includes one street tree and five private trees. Um, the applicant's not requesting the removal of any trees. Um, storm water management was reviewed uh by the town um and confirmed compliance with the town's storm water management requirements. So, the project requires a total of eighty point nine cubic feet of water to be managed. So, that's all rooftop and and impervious surfaces. Um, so that includes the um, the rear addition, the pa- the rear patio, um, and the uh I think I, I I think I said driveway, but I I'm a porch, so I apologize for that error. Um, the project provides for ninety-four point five cubic feet of water, so the proposal utilizes a rain garden in the rear yard. So, that's defined as a non-structural storm water management device. I had attached a spreadsheet that breaks down the criteria in the town code, and so uh staff in the evaluation um, determined that the proposed construction requires two variances um in the front porch. The uh, if the council finds that the proposal satisfies the variance requirements that I can read again if you need me to, but the the same ones that I referenced earlier that we heard. Um, the staff recommends the approval of the other elements of the permit, um, as they've been found to be in compliance with the town code. Um, uh, Doug, uh, I don't know if you have anything to add to my report?
Uh, no, nothing to add.
Um, Tollberts?
No, nothing good.
All right, then with that.
Okay, thank you. Is Mr. Herman here?
Hi.
Hi, welcome. You you wouldn't mind coming to the lecture and so people? So, and as your opportunity, if you wanna present application, you're fine, but you can also comment on the report and take questions, whichever.
I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate being here and uh I think I have my architect, my engineer as well on the line to answer
Are they online?
technical questions for.
Are they online, if they want to?
Um, I'm not sure what their names are, so I I don't know for sure.
Oh, Andrew Husbands.
Oh, yes, okay. We have Andrew, Andrew is here, yeah.
Okay, is he, is his video on?
Um, I can um, see if he wants to turn it on.
Okay, and who's the other one?
Uh, Chris Lab.
So, can you tell us who they are? One is your architect and one?
Chris Lab is my architect and uh Andrew Husbands is my engineer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, got it. And they can also present too, if you'd like.
I'd like to show you guys a picture of my front stoop and the reason, basically, I'd like to extend it a little bit. I think it's about a foot and half from what I have already. And uh my wife and my two kids are gonna be moving in with me soon to finish the renovation. Super excited to, you know, move in and uh, thank you very much. And happy to answer any questions you guys might have about the project.
Okay, thank you. Counsel President Serkot, any other questions?
Yeah, I I do have a question that's um, not actually on the porch itself. I'm trying to understand the fence situation. Just as I'm looking at the drawings, it looks like the existing chain link fence is inside your property line on parts of your property and outside your property line on other areas. And you're replacing it with a wooden lattice fence, is that correct? But, I mean, where's that wooden fence gonna go?
In front of the chain link fence.
Was the chain link fence staying or?
It's staying, I just put the wood fence in front of it, so.
Okay.
The hope it satisfies, you know, any boundary issue or.
Okay, well, that that was gonna be my question. If you were pushing back to your boundary, it looks like you have some inches of your property that's on the other side of that chain link fence going towards forty-seven sixteen Fallstone and forty-seven fourteen Fallstone. But but you're not gonna be.
I know.
Okay, um, the, you know, the question I have, maybe this is more for I tell, trying to understand how our established building line works. If if we approve this and now we're approving more physical stuff in the house extending the established building line. Does this change the established building line for future home projects?
I I can actually answer that because um when established building lines are determined, um houses that have a variance are excluded from that calculation.
That's it. Thank you. I I don't have any further questions.
Okay, any, Counselor Vardy, any questions?
I was just, just trying to sort of because it looks like the variance is for huge distances, but it's like a house conforming, I assume.
Correct.
And so the actual distance is much smaller. What is the actual, how much closer to the street in, will the new steps be known, be able to the current step?
I have, I had it on the, I think on the site, I never, please, I'd be the distance.
Why don't you ask the architect?
Yeah, we can ask the the engineer, the architect, they're available.
Mr. Hutchins, are you, are you able to, I'm sorry, Mr. Hutchins?
Andrew, Andrew.
Did you hear the question, did you hear the question?
Yes, I I I heard a question. Um, the new steps are going to be eighteen point five three feet from the property line. Um, we did not, we do not show the the setback of the old steps. But, um, if we're saying that no, the the old, old steps are, looks like it's twenty, twenty point seven five. So, we're talking about an increase of two feet about?
Right, thank you. Is that your only question?
That, that's my only question.
Thank you, Counselor Hall.
Yes, um, it looks like you're relocating the HVAC system. Where was it?
Uh, it's in the back of the house.
Behind, so it's behind the house.
Behind the house.
And you're moving it to the side.
To the side, yes.
So, my question would be, is what's the, what are the, what are our rules in terms of, you know, is, is it backs up to that to the house next to that corner house on Fallstone?
Right, so HVAC HVAC systems can encroach, that is one of the few projections that we allow into rear setbacks, but not into side setbacks. So, on the site plan, they've still indicated that the the AC units are twelve to twelve and a half feet away from that property line, so they're, yeah, they're within the um side setbacks.
Okay, um, so just one last question on on the front porch. I know that front porch well. Are you coming forward or are you going to the side? That's what I don't understand.
Uh, both, to the forward and then to the side.
Okay.
A little bit forward.
Gotcha, alright.
That's where we'll, we'll back to any questions.
Um, so does that, so does the front porch size um match like what we've allowed for front porches in the town?
So, I I can't give you a a list of what other sizes, maybe.
I'm, I might be able to pull up the other other ones.
What about the house next door, think the Stein house?
But I would say based on the the site plan, it it does look modest in size compared to
And is it open air? And is there a variance needed for the stormwater?
No, no, it 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 requires about eighty feet and then they capture they they size the rain garden in the rear to capture extra water to make up for the front porch, basically. So, it captures an extra fifteen.
But then there's also like a patio and a deck
Yes.
and things that are going into the backyard, are those taken into consideration?
Yeah, all the
For the stormwater.
All the impervious, yeah, all the impervious additions. Um, so the the rear addition, the patio and the front porch are all included in that calculation.
And and that's all being
Yeah, so all of that combined requires uh uh the eighty So.
Eighty point nine.
Eighty point, eighty point nine cubic feet, and then they they're actually capturing ninety-four and a half cubic feet, so they're they've, they've exceeded what is required, actually.
Okay. I have one more question. Mr. Herman, it says here that 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 you are submitting this on behalf of an LLC. Would you own the house?
I own the house, correct.
You are the LLC.
I am the LLC.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that, thank you.
So, you're, you're done with your questions?
I'm done now.
Okay, thank you. Has any resident or guest wish to speak?
No, um, I was, I was trying to follow up. Oh, I'm s- I'm sorry, uh, uh, online, no, nobody had indicated anything.
I just had a question. What is the address of this?
Oh, yeah, if you could just go and see. Tell us your name and your and your street, please.
Athena Cali Greystone. Uh, I was curious, what is the address of this property? We don't have the agenda and it's not.
Fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey Street. Did you, did you, did you wish to make a comment?
No, no.
Okay, thank you so much, thanks. Okay, is there did anybody else have a question?
Not online.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Um, I, the only thing is, I was, I was trying to follow up on Councilmember Rob's question about um the other um, so the the other the other very similar uh case at forty-eight sixteen Essex that the council had considered in uh November, I think it was, uh, no, I'm sorry, in December. Um, that extended a porch thirteen feet in width. Um, so, uh, it's that that extended the width, but it didn't go into the the setback any any further. So, the difference here is that they're, they're going into the setback two feet, um, but not, not as wide as as the one that is also there. Those are uh the differences.
But the wa- the width is only dependent on what the width is of the house, right? I mean, because you can't really go wider than a house.
Correct, right, right. Well, you well, but but the porch isn't the whole length of the the house either, so.
Right, right, but I guess the question is more the front, like so why, why did that one not have to have a variance?
Oh, it did.
Oh, it did?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But so if they extended out two feet?
So, this one extends, so this one is existing non-conforming, like the previous one. Um, they're, they're extending the front of the stoop two feet to turn it into a a front porch. The other one, they had an existing stoop that they just expanded on the side to turn into, because the stoop was larger, so.
Got it, got it, got it.
That's the difference between the two.
Okay, but I mean, every, people feel that it it won't stick out like too much.
Yeah, usually.
If you look at the picture that he put around. Yeah, it was, as you say, there's a whole bunch of chairs underneath the windows. So, which I, I just, I've, I've looked at those chairs. So, I I think what it is, is like you're seeing, it'll be like that. Well, no, it would go two feet out. Two feet out, but.
Yeah, why don't you ask, why don't you ask the
So, it it would be two feet out further from here? Yeah.
Correct, yes, yes.
But does that conform with, I mean?
That's what the variance really is for.
Well, I know, but I mean, we've allowed, you know, there's a lot of front porches in this neighborhood.
Well, you, now you're getting into some discussion. Do you have any more questions?
No.
Because you can talk. Okay, thank you. So now I will, I turn it over to the Counsel President.
I seem to recall other porch renovations additions that we've considered over the last couple of years with variances and generally approve them without an issue like um, up in him, the other up in him, while going towards the pool, there is the the roof over him is gonna project. Especially the house that had the pre-existing non-conforming, it puts them in a tough situation for any any modifications. And I like the idea of sort of sensibility since personal aesthetics, but I like the idea of an open porch, and I like the idea adding value to houses because the more valuable houses, probably the less I think it's been torn down and then for something undesirable. Um, do you have any other questions or thoughts about?
No, I mean, I I agree, like I just, I wonder, um. No, I mean, I I agree, like I just, I wonder, um, in our town code or whatever, I mean, if like, you know, we don't want it to be just like an endless amount of, you know, space, like if if, you know, some some porches are super, you know, deep from that, it it's just making sure that it it conforms with like the look of the neighborhood, you know, in terms of like, you don't have this house that like all of a sudden that has front porch that like extends all the way out. You know, um, but it sounds like it does, it's not.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky because we amended the code to no longer allow exceptions for projections. So the way that an established building line is measured now would be taken from the front of any porches or stoops or anything, whereas before that wouldn't have counted towards it, so we would have counted. So that's why we're we're getting more that are more forward and smaller established building lines. Um, if I don't know if that that sort of makes sense with what you're with what you're asking, but that's also why the established building line is going to be pushed forward more and their projections are um are no longer allowed to encroach into that setback. So before, I think we allowed five, five feet to encroach into a setback. So in this instance, you could subtract five feet from the variance, but it would also be that the houses next to it would also be five feet further, if that makes sense, because you would be measuring from the house front as opposed to the front of suit. So it sort of has a doubling effect on the established building line.
And hypothetically, if like someone then goes and tears down that house, not that anyone would, but, um, I mean, does that pay play any role in the rebuilding? That they were instead given a variance in that way?
Uh, Ron might build it, so that's better than.
Does the existing house count in the EBL calculation for a new home?
Yeah.
Right, it's pretty exactly missing out. So no, it would not have a bearing on what the front setback would be for a new construction.
Okay, I don't really have anything else.
Next discussion.
Another question, I'll propose an motion and see how it goes. I propose the council approved the permanent application submitted by Robert.
Oh, can I ask some comments perhaps?
Oh, yes, sorry, right.
Absolutely. So the point is, it's not identical to the one we considered in Essex, because one on Essex did not go any further towards the street than the existing house it stands right now. This one is going probably towards the street, it's that's going to be two feet further in on the porch, a little bit more.
So what do we do with that? That's a question.
Now, the first thing I looked to was neighbors. And I noticed none of the neighbors objected. And that's meaningful to me. So I'm leaning towards accepting this because it is, it is not going to be a large porch by any stretch of imagination. And the small advanced this way, it's not disturbing any of the neighbors. And so I don't see that we can, we we necessarily have to disapprove it because there's no objection elsewhere in the time to it. And that makes me more comfortable with it.
I I'd like to say that I think we should approve this because I think it's only going to enhance this property. I know that property quite well and it was right there. And I think it will fit in well with the other, the other on houses and their their porches. I don't think it's going to stick out in any way. It will just be an enhancement. I think we should go with it.
Well said, thank you for that. Okay, so I propose that the council approve the permanent application submitted by Robert Herman on behalf of three six one two LLC for the construction of a new year yard addition to the existing home, construction of a patio, construction of the front porch and relocation of an HVAC unit on the property located at five five two nine Surrey. And what do I need to say about variances? Don't we accept the variances?
The the variance is is approved as requested, the variances plural.
Right, the variances are approved as presented.
Can I have one suggested condition?
Yes.
That a revised site plan be submitted deleting the statement that the existing chain link fence will be replaced and showing the location of the picket fence, which cannot encroach into a joint project.
Right?
Okay. Okay, so when these days.
I can say so.
And so, thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. So everybody understood, everybody's. Okay, so there's no discussion hearing on all this in favor. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'll be, I'll I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
There are a little bit ahead of time.
Yes, um, since we are, um, a little bit ahead of time, um, why don't we go to, why don't you start?
Sure, um, may hold up for um five minutes. Um, so, um, just some updates on some of the the bigger projects. So some bad news is that uh Petco was delayed in their delivery of the batch of lights. So I heard from them uh last week that they had, um, just received them, so they estimated that they would begin installation at the beginning of March, actually, phase two. Um, previously, they had said the end of January, so it's about a month, month and change delay in that.
Can can we ask questions of the goes or no?
Yeah.
Well, you might as well.
Okay, so what, can you just do the quick like, so has only one phase been done?
Yes.
And that is Dorset?
That's Cumberland, Dorset, Upper Warwick.
Uh, is it all Dorset or?
Yes, all of Dorset, yep. Cumberland, Dorset, Upper Warwick and Upper Surrey.
And then ph- phase two is supposed to start in the beginning of March?
Yes.
And then how many phases are there?
Three altogether.
And then when is ph- is phase three then delayed as well?
They don't, they did not say that that was delayed, so that 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 shouldn't be.
And when is it supposed to start?
Confirm that. I, when I asked him, he said no, um, but but that's what they said, but yet, so that that one should start, um, he said that they would get so that should start at the end of March. So that that one is, um, assuming that they did their delivery, um, next week, which is what they're supposed to do. He said it would be six weeks from then, so.
And so then hypothetically, all of this would be, it takes them a couple of weeks to install, so this should all, this project should be wrapped up by end of April?
Um, yeah, that that seems reasonable, yes.
Okay, and then, um, all of the streetlights that they put in the wrong LEDs type has been corrected?
Yes, yeah, yeah, they fixed this.
And they're going to guarantee that they're going to put the right ones on?
Yeah, we'll kind of tell more.
What does guarantee mean?
Well, I can guarantee that we will check them and make sure that they do if if.
Okay. Okay. Okay, sorry, keep going.
Yeah, no, no, good, all good questions. Um, so, um, another thing uh is that the, for solar panels, um, the the installations completed at the town hall here, um, it, I've had some conversations with uh environment committee and they are interested in pursuing installation at the cool house, um, this year. So originally, we did budget that into this fiscal year. Um, but the installation ended up taking place this fiscal year at the town hall. So we could do that, it would just need to be. Go ahead.
I thought that we were kind of going away from the pool because of all the trees and like the amount of money that would have to be kind of taken down for the trees.
So, um, that's why we did the town hall to start, to start with, because it it was cleaner and easier. When the company did a, uh, not sure the exact name of it is, but when they did an actual analysis of the light that the cool house gets, um, they actually found that the cool house would be able to, uh, would would be an efficient place to to get solar energy.
Without having to take down trees.
Without having to take down trees, yeah, because of the way that it's angled and the direction that it's it's actually, the town hall is pointed west and ideally you actually point south, so the cool house is actually uh pointed in the right direction. Um, but it it's it's so it's at this point more of a a budget and a, um, a asset, yeah, question of do we want to take this on, um, do we want to just consider it as part of the budget and maybe revisit those those questions that we had or?
Do we know when they're going to start to like see some savings as far as like the solar panels we have?
Um, so we, uh, we have started already, so we we are online at the town hall. It's really minimal right now, um, maybe.
Wait till the spring.
Yeah, but.
And that's when they're going to see it. It's it's amazing.
Yeah, I I think in this, once, I I mean, yeah, I, as I, as I recall at the town hall, we were we were going to get, we were going to get about sixty percent of our bill covered by it in the in the summer. So right now, we're at fifteen percent.
Yeah.
So it'll, it'll just gradually go up to that by by summer and then, you know, go down again in the winter. Um, I think at the pool, I I don't want to, I don't want to speak out of turn. I I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was actually a higher percentage at the pool that we could reduce our, reduce our bill for.
Okay.
Um, in part because also the advantage at the pool was that we would tap into the DC and get the credits with DC as opposed to Maryland, which, um, for whatever reason.
It's like quadruple more money.
Are are a lot more. Yeah. So then another, another project is the the stormwater evaluations at the, the the stormwater infrastructure in that uh square, the the mini uh micro watershed that 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 was dubbed, um, between Warwick, Surrey and Dorset Essex. Um, so those are scheduled to start actually next week, so, um, I am going to get speci- what specific addresses on which days and send notice to neighbors this week about that.
Okay, before you go to the next item, so, uh, I want to interrupt you because I'm going to call the next item.
Okay, fair enough.
The, uh, the now, for the, for everyone's benefit, so the now it's time to start this hearing is day twenty five, but we do have a disclaimer in our agenda that, um, we have a legal way to start. If if we're ahead of schedule, we can start, um, up to twenty minutes for all of this. So I'm going to call this item public hearing vote, should be considered a permit application submitted by David Kelly on behalf of David S. Kelly Development Company Incorporated for the construction of a new home at the property located at forty eight fifteen Cumberland Avenue. This is a hearing for the town of Somerset Council for the consideration of a permit application submitted by David Kelly on behalf of David S. County Development Company Incorporated with the construction of a new home at the property located at forty eight fifteen Cumberland Avenue. The hearing will observe the following order. Somerset Town staff will present their findings, submit for the record, a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant and their representatives will rep- present the application. Next, the Somerset Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. The council should introduce all findings of fact during their comments or questions. Next, other interested parties, including town residents, will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff only or make comments to the council applicant or staff. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed at the record close. No new information shall be considered or submitted for the record after this point. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on the permitted decision. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports, Mister Town Manager.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, so our staff is recommending approval of the permit for the construction of a new home. The plans were submitted on January fifth ahead of the deadline, um, and were reviewed by the the staff and the contracted technical experts. The plans, uh, and application complies with the administrative requirements of the code. Um, so we do have a parking plan, house number certificate, notice was delivered to residents as well as, uh, the plans themselves. Um, the building administrator, uh, reviewed the plans, um, the setback requirements and accessory building restrictions were measured and confirmed for compliance with the town code. One important note is that the building height that is proposed is greater than the maximum that's allowed for the town's newly adopted building height restrictions. It's the staff's understanding that because the application was filed before the effective date of the new restriction, that the town's requirements would not be in effect. So the applicant, uh, has some background, first submitted, um, plans to the town in February of twenty twenty three. Um, we've undergone considerable back and forth and, um, revisions. Uh, and so a completed application was was formally submitted on January fifth. And as a reminder, the town's building height went into effect on January ninth. The town arborist has also reviewed the plans and offered tree protection and tree replacement plans for the project. Uh, notably, um, the arborist updated the protection plan after consultation with the abutting property owners at forty eight thirteen Cumberland to ensure the protection of the trees on the neighboring property. Um, with regard to tree removal and replacement, the large cherry tree in the middle of the property is unable to be saved during construction. Um, and we did receive, um, one comment, um, about about that tree. With stormwater management, uh, plans were reviewed, um, they went through three different iterations of the plan. Um, the final plans, um, the project requires a total of eight hundred twelve cubic feet of water to be managed, so that includes all rooftop impervious surfaces and the proposed driveway area on the on the property. And the project provides for eight hundred thirteen cubic feet of water. The proposal utilizes microbioretention facilities, which we define as non-structural stormwater management uh in town code, so it complies with our tiered preferences as well. Uh, with respect to the driveway, the applicant has agreed, um, after discussion with the neighbors and staff to keep the gravel driveway and to replace any disturbances like for like as stipulated in the easement agreement, uh, shared driveway easement agreement with the neighbor. The entrance to the detached garage does include a portion of the driveway that is proposed to be concrete. Um, in consultation with the stormwater consultant, the applicant included a trench drain to capture that water, um, and bring it to the stormwater management devices. Um, one, one note on the, um, sorry, um, uh, one, one note on the driveway is that, um, I I would recommend that a condition of the permit be that, um, that the driveway be, uh, gravel as agreed to in the easements, the site plan still indicates, um, that it would be replaced with concrete. Um, but as I said, the applicant has agreed to to keep it gravel, so um, that that agreement might want to be captured in the, uh, in the permit, uh, application, or excuse me, in in the permit itself. The only other note I would have is just that the, uh, Town attorney might have advice as it pertains to the building height restrictions, there's a couple of other conditions that the the staff had recommended, including wall check, height check. Um, tree protection, tree replacement be followed. Um, but other than that, I think that uh concludes the. Uh, I don't know if you wanna add anything about the tree tree protection, I'm sorry.
So, um. Seven trees. Um. The one uh. There's two hazardous trees on property now, uh the large two are proper. In the west has a large girl in breed at the base. Um, and it's compromised visibility and the red maple in the back is hollow. And also the county's recommended to remove that too, that is down part and. Um, not remove it entirely, but just cut it um. To the ground and make the stump for stable. Uh, the other trees is the flowering cherries and the um and the ferns in the front driveway. The box elements in the front and the garden footprint. There's two axes in the back, there're in the there're ones that's in the footprint and the fire retention structure. And an action hauling in the footprint of the. Garage and the action hauling are also in the ground, so we're recommending four canopy trees, two ornamental trees. And one evergreen tree to be re- uh planted for reforestation. And then the tree protection plan. Been provided. Uh, there's trees on the um. Uh, deserted property that are either shared or on uh the forty fifteen property. And uh these need to be properly pruned to elevate them. Um, and um. Also, um, Mr. Kelly indicated that he do a layout um. Of the driveway and see if we can maybe get another foot tree protection. So that's all I have.
Doug, did you have anything to add to the uh reports? You're you're muted, just FYI, I don't know if uh. Looks like you're.
Nothing to add.
Okay, great, then that concludes the staff report.
Doesn't it, didn't you say the town attorney?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, thank you.
If the council has questions. Oh, you don't wanna say anything?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, welcome.
Well, bye, Jerry. I'm going around the avenue. And I really don't have a lot to present, the the project has been going on for a while and been. Many many iterations, so. I'm sure you all will have questions of me and I have Shane with the Golden Valley here to answer any of the civil questions. Pardon me?
You said he's a civil engineer?
Civil engineer, yeah. So, um, yes, um.
Okay, well, thank you for um joining us tonight, Council President Sir, if you have any questions. Um. I had, uh, yes, a couple of questions, might be more for Steph, like I counted. Eleven trees with X's in them, but you only mentioned seven, or some of them were like shrubs instead of trees? Not to tell. Like said last talk, I said just like, you know.
Yeah, the ones I have on my planet are trees.
Uh, okay.
The others are. And that's the trees I found that fall within our code.
Uh, okay, I just got it, um. And this might be a question more for Doug or Matt, but. The setback requirements, what does our code say about like the roof extending?
The uh.
Into into the setbacks. What what if anything is allowed to go into the setbacks?
Um.
Think we allow two and a half feet, that's what I.
I think the eve we allow um.
Because I thought there was something, right? So then.
Yeah, cornices and eaves may project two and a half feet into any minimum setback.
So I I I so this would be for um Mr. Kelly, I I note that. The left side of houses you look at it is up against the eight-foot established or setback line, property line. Um, which means that the roof can't extend more than is to two and a half feet. I. What do you, why do you have this, just curiosity? Seems like a very large driveway. And it's a long driveway, it's it seems to be almost up to the side of the house, like you could park a lot of many cars there.
Part of this process is uh been to develop and create an easement for. Our neighbors and they are. Adamant that the the surface of that gravel driveway remain. Um, and I've been up and down it several times, as you go, tires throw the gravel. It was not my preference, it would be hard to shovel and. Um, so I would like a hard surface and. And to be able to get back to the driveway and then add to to the garage and then. As a matter of a turnaround, uh if you're on a soft gravelly surface, it's it's just gonna. Uh, it's just not gonna work right, so.
Should want more width or turnaround because it's gravel.
Yeah, and I I have that side porch that comes down and the the recycling bins will be there. Put some sort of protection, landscape propensing or something there to to hide it and that's an egress. Uh, point to the home, so.
Okay.
That'll factor in as well as the air conditioning, the nothing units will be down behind the the bump out with the.
Thank you very much, I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, I know that there's concern over the loss of the flowering cherry that's in front at the moment. And I understand it has to go, there is no way that it can stay. Um, it's gonna be replaced with one flowering cherry at the moment, what I'm wondering is whether it could be replaced with two flowering cherries. Trees have some considerable chance of not making it to maturity by their planting, unfortunately, especially in these uncertain times. If having two flowering cherries would increase the chances that one at least would go to maturity.
Well, are you asking?
Well, if not, the arborist, if it's possible.
Oh, sure. Possible, sure.
Is that your only question? Kessler, hello?
I wonder how big, how many square feet is this house?
Um, did I know that, but it's probably fifty by hundred.
No, it's.
Think I.
It's over, it's like down.
I think it's. I think it's it's two thousand nine hundred thirty-one square feet of the. That's the the surface of the house.
Well, the roof is like.
Hold on, hold on, there is a question.
No, I just wondered what the square footage of the house was, so so it's, I have trouble reading this, this is a little tough, like somebody who's not trained. To read this, but the roof is thirty-four fifty-two, so so it's three levels?
Well, it's two and a half. The county doesn't still allow you to build the full area of the floor below it, so it's. It's gonna be going, develop fifty percent of the top level with that story.
And is this, is this a house you're building to sell?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure, my wife and I talked about moving to it, so. Uh, it's.
It's okay. It's okay to say no, I just wonder, just wondered, you know.
That's a weird question, I tell you, I, the house I live in, I I started, I bought it and. You know, I might have sold it, but I decided I'm gonna go in there and now we find the little heights, um. I don't know if you know my house, but.
I don't.
We live on one level and. Because I have a bedroom upstairs, but we live on the first floor and it's just a little small for us, so yeah, we.
We put in an elevator to this house?
It will be an elevator, it will only service the lower level and first and second floor.
Okay, just one, thank you.
Zay, Zay, okay.
Yes, I'm.
Kessler, right there.
Um, so I was just like trying to find out where the. Where all of like the stormwater. Stuff is for the plants. Cause it looks like you guys have to do. Eight hundred and, you know, sixteen or something of cubic feet of water. And is that all just being covered by a like a rain garden?
It's a bio- uh bioretention facility back to the left of the garage. All the rains go there, uh Shane can speak to that if uh he's with his professional opinion about it, but.
Yeah, I'm Shane Shane Green, uh Potomac Valley Surveys. Um, I'm a licensed surveyor and the engineer on this on this project. So all the stormwater is collected in that bioretention facility uh next to the garage and then it's. Released out of that through a metered downfall.
So, so I'm sorry, can you explain what a bioretention?
Bioretention is a facility that collects the stormwater. Um, it's similar to a rain garden, but they take uh larger drainage areas. And then it filters the water down through uh planting media and vegetation that's growing. And then lets the water out the side of the box. Would be an underdrain.
Is there like a pump or anything that pumps?
No, it's all gravity.
It's all gravity, and then um, and then. Cause you know, I've seen, I've seen this lot and they've they have like. You know, that that pipe that goes through the back of it. And then into like a creek, makeshift creek, and then a bridge and like, you know.
Well, the the bridge is not on this property.
Oh, it's on the next door neighbor's property?
Yes, we have.
And so, um, obviously that water has gone like through that, you know, that area, which is why they have that. So, how does the water then from like the, like if 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 it's on the left side of the garage? How does the left side of the house? Water flow get to the gor- left side of the garage?
All of the downspouts from the house and the garage are piped directly into the facility.
Oh, so it goes underground?
Yes.
Then over, but then, but isn't like, isn't there kind of like a slope, like wouldn't you have to like kind of?
There there's enough cover for the uh downspout pipes to get over to the bioretention facility.
And what about that that broken pipe? That's like in the middle of the yard, like what where does, it's like we just had um on Instagram, they just. Posted like something about our town has all these piping underneath it all, like so is that, is that pipe part of that original? Like town structure?
Um, it's part of original work, but it's no longer in service.
What does that mean?
We provided the town with some records that we found. The pipe used to go from the inlet that's in the street in front of the neighbor's house to the right. But that inlet is walled off and that pipe does not connect. Mr. Kelly had that pipe uh camered, they were only able to get up there part of the way and it's collapsed. So underneath of the dr- the plan is to just abandon the pipe in place to the extent possible and leave it as is. But it's not currently connected to any storm drain.
But the pipe goes into that little makeshift creek thing?
It does.
Water. Cause there is water that goes through that.
Yes, but it's, it would be groundwater through the collapsed pipe.
So where does that groundwater come from?
Uh, when it rains on the ground. Water will find the.
Like, does it drain into the pipe or out?
Yes, we cannot find any connection to that pipe.
And so then what happens with that water when that pipe is gone?
With the existing metal pipe, the broken metal pipe is gone?
Yeah.
The water, well, we're only removing the pipe if it's necessary, to the extent it's necessary.
But the, it it does shoot out water, so where would that water then go?
It would continue um into that uh creek bed.
So, but isn't the house gonna be there?
No, the house is is not in that creek area at all.
So it'll just like go over the land?
Yes.
And rush down into that creek bed?
Well, it won't rush, there's not that much water there.
I mean, it cause it it seems to me then that like all of that water then drains down towards Drummond. And then it would drain towards Little Falls, like all along the backside of the fence line between Drummond and Cumberland, is that right?
Well, we're not increasing any. Any runoff into that pipe at all, we're not using that pipe at all. It's just passing through us.
Right, but there but there there is, I mean, some water does use that pipe. Right now.
Water that flows through the ground into that pipe as best we can determine.
Yeah, and then down.
Right, so that water would still just be infiltrating into the ground and following the soil. On the same, along the same path.
And have you guys tested the soil like in that bioretention device for it being able to?
The bioretention is is um built with imported sand and planter media.
Okay. And so you're not concerned that there's gonna be this big runoff that like comes down from Drummond?
No.
Like an additional runoff?
No.
With all the impervious surface that's being taken away?
No, all of our projects' impervious surface is going into this facility. And the facility not only resides for the one-year storm as required by the environmental site design. But it could also contain the ten-year peak flow, which is shown on the plans.
And will the house have some pumps?
Well, they wouldn't go into this.
Where would they go?
They will go into the rain leaders, it'll be pumped into the um underground rain leader to the driveway side of the home.
So good.
End up in the bioretention.
It that, so it does, it does end, the some pumps, do you end up in the bioretention?
Uh, yes, for the the exterior of the house will have a grain time. And it will probably daylight, I'm, you know, I don't have the grades in front of me, but the back left door of the home. Is that great, so ideally that's. Uh, if there was any groundwater and, uh, I'm just that, crap, we'll force it into those pipes and it will just dissipate by. By gravity.
Yeah, it's just like, you know.
Well, the house will have its own pump, yes.
Okay, we just have so much on, you know, there's so much like. Street water and like overflow when it rains, these heavy rains that we're having and. The house, to me, looks like it already collects a lot of water. So it makes me, you know, wary, cause like, you know, we're taking away permeable surfaces to. You know, and trees that helps absorb all this water, that there's just gonna be a significant amount of water runoff that will. Ultimately could impact like the downhill neighbors, but you guys have studied that?
Yes, so the bioretention contains all the water that falls on the impervious surfaces on the lot. The roof for the house and the garage and the proposed driveway is all collected. And put into this facility to be managed.
So what happens if there's like two one-year storms one day after the other?
The facility can hold the peak flow of a ten-year storm.
Which is how many inches, do you know?
Fi- five point one, uh one-year storm is two point six, just for for reference.
Um, okay, and then when you guys are planning on tearing down the house, have you like site, like is there asbestos in this house?
Well, I've got a um engineer, a remediation firm. Taylor, uh engineering, it's gonna. Fair report coming, but I haven't seen any insulation or asbestos in them, but I'm having to do the. The study.
And does that have to be done before like the tear down of it?
Yes.
Um, and then about the driveway, so you, I I my understanding is that you guys share a driveway. With forty-five thirteen, that's the gravel driveway.
Yes.
So are are, is there gonna be an additional curb cut in order to facilitate this other driveway?
No.
No, I would I would like one, but I'm not asking for one, you know, except the limits for the town. That's that's all we're gonna go with.
So so then the person like pulls into this dual driveway? And then and then the car goes back on the gravel and then turns?
Well, it's the eight from this concrete from the street to the property and the right away from the town. And then it'll turn it turns gravel that that driveway we would name. And then we'll have a portion that will go to this new egress to the garage.
Okay, and is it a two car garage?
Yes.
Um, I don't think I have any other questions, man.
We made it a smaller two car garage and you've give an additional offset on the right side of that garage uh beyond what the town apartment is.
And you guys did not need a waiver from Montgomery County for water?
No.
No.
Um, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna do second round, council president circuit, do you have any further questions?
I do.
That's from bar. Any further questions?
None.
And you're.
Not me.
Okay. So um now uh it's the opportunity for residents and guests to comment, how many people here? Major here, okay, so why don't you, why don't we start?
And we have one comment on on online.
Let's take the comment online first.
On that side.
Remember to say your name and your and your street, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kumar Vaswani. Uh Trent Street. Um, I guess I just have a question because Balens says that the stormwater provisions satisfy the town code. Is there a requirement in the town code for maintenance of these facilities? Because don't they eventually clog up or silt up?
In that chair? Did you hear the question?
I did hear the question, um there is a right of entry maintenance agreement recorded in the county land records as a requirement of Montgomery County's DPS uh permit issuance for sediment control.
And the town as well, the town would require a similar agreement.
Okay, so could I just follow up? So will that be a condition of the permit? And where are these filed in the town office? Does the town office kind of keep track of these to make sure that they get annual maintenance or whatever?
Yeah, uh so it's a new process for us, but right now basically just have to, right now we just have a put a put a calendar reminder for myself, um but I am investigating permitting software to better better be able to manage it, but for right now, yeah, just calendar reminders.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Russell, I bet Russell.
Who?
Another person, Russell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh hello from Kevin Do, uh I'm unfortunately at on a work trip at the moment, uh but uh I think my wife, I'll let her since she's in person, uh take it and maybe just jump in if if necessary.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, that's that's all online, okay. Run around.
You don't wanna like Jamie goes and you let Russell go? You let Russell go and his wife is here, Jamie.
Well, I know what I said was gonna.
Oh, okay.
I'd rather have Jamie go first.
Okay.
Uh, I mean.
Yeah, please, I said people can see and tell us true.
Okay.
Say your name, please.
I'm Jamie Kaplan, I live at forty eight thirteen, next sort of the construction. Um, so first Matt, thank you for clarifying that the break that the driveway is gonna stay gravel, so I appreciate that. One thing we wanted to understand is right now, the way the plans were drawn, it showed that the fencing would go on our side of the driveway, so I just wanted to clarify that that's gonna be on the property five hundred forty.
Yeah, tha- thank you for reminding me and and uh I think David had been going back and forth with Doug about this and um correct me if I'm wrong, David, but I think you had agreed to move the 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 fence onto your property during construction, was that right?
Well, the Eastman states that the the driveway will be accessible for the get out of the James through the duration, so and and the process is for limits of disturbance, which is shown on the plan. You wanna make it to full lot, uh we have had to move it in in the backyard for the Department of Natural Resources that we had as part of the redesign of the stormwater management uh plan. So the process is to meet with the county inspector after the peak limits of disturbance are marked on the ground. And then we can adjust it and that's uh I've done this before with shared driveways and they always will say yes, but it will burn uh and then what the.
But I guess that the um the fencing isn't gonna go on our property, I guess my question is and the Eastman specifically said like that the materials are gravel, why are the plans being drawn where it's showing that the driveway is concrete and then the fence is on our property, so I hear, I think what you're saying is when they come out you'll have a discussion and I'll move it, but I guess it's kind of a simple of a yes or no answer, is it? Why aren't the plans drawn for the barrier fencing to be on your property versus?
Well, it is on our properties in the Eastman, uh it's not on their properties down the propping line, which is uh the Eastman is ten feet, five feet on your side, five feet on our side. There's a little bit over five feet on our side and there won't be any construction activity down the ground broadly.
Okay, so there's and there won't be, the driveway won't be used during construction?
Uh, not for vehicles, there might be some people walking down there, we're gonna have to as Colbert said, we're gonna have to lift up some trees, so there may be some foot traffic down through there, but um
Okay.
No, and he's uh Col- Colbert has a street protection down through there, which is, you know, we we can't really get through that, so.
Okay, I think it's just good to have like clarification of materials, where is the fencing going? Shared driveways can be tricky. Um, so just the other thing, I mean, if you look at the property, so pretty much half the trees are being removed from the property and then the ones that are staying. I think from our side, there is trees that go right along the property line. Um, and I know Mister Kelly has agreed that there'll be protected fencing. But the question that we had is the the concrete that goes back there to build that driveway is very wide and I think Steve Sorko had asked like, why is there so much concrete? And that the concrete in the back has nothing to do with the gravel driveway, the gravel drive gravel driveway in the front, but if that driveway going towards the back wasn't so wide, it would allow for less disturbance of that critical root zone for the trees. So we had, I mean, if you look at it, the house is gonna be, I mean, the footprint of our house is less than two thousand square feet. This is gonna be a very large home next to a very small home, so from our side, we really wanna be able to see that the trees should provide some privacy and I think who's ever living in that house is gonna want that as well. And when I talked um to Tuller, he had even said, you know, for the driveway, if it wasn't so wide or also he had talked about if there wasn't a cut into the driveway so that that root zone was disturbed. Um, and then we had an arborist come out and just asked him um like with this plan, are these trees gonna be impacted, will they survive? And he said, you know, these trees are definitely gonna be impacted. The industry standard is for every inch of diameter of the tree that there's a foot of tree protection and right now it's about a third of that. So I just wonder if there's anything more that can happen so that the trees that are on that property line that that they can be preserved so that they survives through, I know when I talked to Tuller, he said they'll definitely be impacted. I think they'll make it, but I feel like why should we just reduce our risk of the trees that are remaining on the property?
Okay. Most of those trees, all the ones are property.
Read down.
Got a setback off the property, they're along close to the property. Or it's seven feet. The concrete driveway is a will have a minimal effect on the root zone, it's it's four inches of concrete with no gravel base, so it's you've gotten four inches into the soil, the so the the um sediment control fence is gonna go down eight inches, so it'll be above that anyway. Though if there's any um root disturbance, it's gonna be from the.
Just ask your question, Dr. President.
Yeah, I I I've discussed with the um couple of times. And also with the killer. Um the the uh there, I I looked at, I've looked at this side and there's no um major roots that you can see on the surface coming on the forty eight fifteen property side. Which is a good inch, I mean, if there were large trees there, I'd be very concerned. And um there I there's enough space here, I mean, every tree's impacted when you do an actuary, you know, tree. Um we, there's five feet there now from the property line for the tree protection. And we can probably get another flur too depending on the layout of the of the of the driveway. Which give you six or seven feet. And um in my experience if there's there's no large roots coming on that side then uh the tree can revive and survive.
And what happens if they don't revive and revive?
Well, there there there's one, there there's one shared tree in the bread store on.
It don't survive.
The forty fifteen properties.
And then there is the two towards the back.
The two towards back are are both aren't gonna be affecting, they're far enough away. Those are those are fun. Um, a hundred percent confident enough.
Um, could could I make?
If you're willing to you know, those trees were coming down to replace them in the uh with new trees of some some height, but um
Who, did Mr. Green wanna say something?
Russell, did you wanna say?
Uh, I just wanted to mention that I I I'm not sure that the the drawings that were submitted are totally accurate with the trees uh in the in the sense that there's four hemlocks in a row that were planted, I think by somebody who owned our property originally, intended to be right along the property line. They've grown in different places, but there's no line that you can draw, if you actually go look at them, there's no line that you can draw that goes between that connects the first and the fourth, that doesn't also go through number two and three. The fourth tree is labeled as four inches, but it's bigger than tree number two, it just it splits into two trees that are become four inches. Uh, so just to just to wanted to note that it's uh there really are four relatively large trees there uh that it it you know, are basically in a line, it's it's not uh not exactly, I think, as drawn. Uh, so I think they they're kind of all shared trees. Um, and then beyond that, there's that ironwood that is older than the town, I think uh it's a very slow growing tree that's very mature, it's probably been there over a hundred years. And I'm I'm worried about the circumference of the protection around it as well.
So let's have, Dr. She has a rest.
The ironwood in back is far away from any construction, so I mean, the corner of the the garage is well away from that tree.
One possibility.
Um, this is Bob Wertz at forty nine oh seven.
Hold on, wait, you'll you'll get your chance.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then my only other comment is, I know you're looking at the variance for the height and I think they had talked about there's two people potentially moving in or selling the house, but I see that six thousand square feet, I don't, considering the footprint of the house, the size of the garage, I don't see the need to be giving a variance for something to be even larger than what it currently what it just seems to me that to be completely excessive, I mean the house has an elevator, the size of the footprint of the house, I don't think it needs to be any, I think the restrictions of the town has been placed were passed for a reason. And the house should be held to that standard, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, did Mr. Green wanna say anything else? Very question, okay, thank you, so let's, I guess, since.
And I know just the.
The words.
He wanted to talk about the cherry tree too.
Yeah, yeah, we we're not, we're still here, thank you so much.
Okay.
Um is that is that the only other one on the line?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Wertz, go go ahead, identify yourself please and then your comment or question.
My, you're unmuted yourself.
I think you're muted. Sure, okay, we'll come back.
There.
Wait, there. Oh, here he is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, tell us your name and your street, please.
Uh, Bob Wertz, four nine oh seven Cumberland. I'm downhill from the 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 next lot down uh from the lot we're discussing. Um, I I'm I'm impressed that collecting the water in the back is uh very well thought through. The problem is that the drain for the water is across the fence on the uh drum Drummond side of of all of our lots. And it's not clear to me how the water from our side gets to that little brook or uh drain that's on the other side of the fences. And I didn't hear any explanation of how that would uh be done and I'm interested in it because if there's more uh water uphill, there's gonna be more water downhill.
Okay, thank you, so uh is the engineer gonna answer that? Or just uh one answer?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I can answer if you'd like. Um, so if you refer to the plan as I spoke about earlier, all the downspouts for the house are collected and piped uh along the side of the dri- the left hand side of the driveway uh into that facility, so that's how they get from the house side to the backside of that drainage way that we're talking about. And then the outfall for the bio retention facility is a six inch PVC pipe with rip rap on it to protect the slope uh from the outfalling water.
And where does that go?
The outfalling water goes into the drainage way.
The drainage way in in the uh on the Drummond side?
Yes.
What do they say about that?
Well, we're not increasing any runoff to the neighboring lot.
Um, well, that's to be seen.
Well, that's what the calculations show.
That and so there there won't be any more water coming on the surface than there is now.
That's correct.
Even though they're making it concrete. Do you wanna talk about trees?
Okay.
Did you have a further question?
Trees.
No, I think that answers it. Uh, as long as the calculations turn out to be right, but they are calculations.
Okay, if you have another question, ra- ra- please raise your hand, um if you think. So thank you. Okay, now, um Mr. Green.
Okay.
Yeah, please, some people can.
Well, first of all, I'm very happy that finally, I'm Lucy Freeman at four seven one nine Fallstone, and I'm very happy this is finally on the agenda tonight after we bought it, Mr. Kelly, fifteen months ago, and I know that the previous owner, Lori Barres, when when she comes into town frequently, uh she's always sad to see nothing is happening, and so I'm glad that tonight is a night of progress and as Mr. Kelly knows, I have been concerned about the cherry pretty the flowering cherry from from a year ago earlier and uh my understanding is that there is a driveway now, that there is a shared driveway and um I don't understand why now the tree has to go because there is a driveway, there's a shared driveway. You know, is it the house, this driveway is that much larger? You know, is it, the house, this driveway is that much larger?
Well, I, I can tell you the, uh, big part of the construction process, permitting process is to. Abandon the existing structure from all public utilities, that's water, sewer, electric, gas, you know, along with telephone and. You have to do vector control, but the, uh, the big one that affects this tree is the water sewer. And that sewer is down probably nine feet, never has, right in front of that tree. We, uh, capped it, ten feet off the front of the house behind the tree. And it's got to be inspected by WSC. They came out and wouldn't allow that. Uh, it has to be at the property line, so we explained again and abandoned the sewer at the property line. And WSC has replaced the sewer all the way down the street, so there's PVC line in the street. And there were, uh, terracotta piles to the, uh, feeders to the home. So, no matter what happens, that has to be reconnected to that house and it has to be a ten-foot ditch. From just to the left of the driveway to the house, which is unfortunately like that tree is. So even if nothing happens, that, you know, we're going to have to reconnect the sewer and. It's, uh, that tree isn't going to be in the way. I, you know, you know, I, uh, about my tree, I planted cherry in the middle of the lawn, or. I can do the same here, so.
This is a particularly special tree because it's the early bloomer and, and I don't know the type of thing. It's an early bloomer and it was featured in the Washington Post. And so, and everyone's going up and down the street, you know, not. Lots of people going down the street. They stand in front of that tree. Lori used to watch him sitting inside her house, watching everyone posing in front of the tree. I would, you know, it's a very special tree on that street. I mean, there are other people here who want to talk about that. And, you know, it just seems high that his sewer has to be right there.
Well, that's just where, that's where WSC has the sewer. But, and, and, you know, there's been a discussion about placement of the. Uh, trash container and, and big trucks coming into, in, in the front end of this project that need to stage someone that can't use the gravel driveway. There's street protection for the street trees, so. And, and there's a, uh, toilet facility that goes out front, so there's clearly no room. There's about fourteen feet between the gravel driveway and the tree protection for the street tree. But that doesn't leave a lot of room for, for construction materials and vehicles, so it's going to be, uh. A be just to do that, the dump will have to come out to bring lumber and some will have to move to get the container back in, so. Having a tree try to be preserved, you know, with a fence around it that's fifteen feet on the line.
You think it's all, is there a way we can save the tree?
I think it's pretty tight block. Um. I, I think it's your genome share, isn't it? So, so why can't come out more than turn pink?
Yeah.
So.
And it's larger than, uh, you know, like the cherry trees on the fall stone, it's larger than, it's taller.
Um. I, you know, I, they, they grow very fast if we, if we plant another one and. Uh, it's a very tight block.
But it would be in the back?
No, I think you can put it in the front.
Like on the other side?
Yeah, well, I, I mean.
At the same spot?
Yes, at the same spot, because what he's talking about, this logistically, you can't. Re, redo the sewer line and. Build the house with the tree there and then it can go in the same, it can go in the front.
Well, maybe somebody else here can speak to this issue. He can say the tree.
Okay, thank you. Who's, who's next?
I'd like to say something. David Brown, um, I live across the street from the project and there's, I'm a builder. I've done a lot of projects, um, in the area where I've had to contest with the groundwater. You know, you dig a hole and it's suddenly full of water. And I imagine that's going to happen back next to where the new garage is going to be placed. I don't know if the engineers have thought of that, but, you know, after going through it, the, um, engineering really doesn't help. If you dig a hole and it's full of water. So there's no place for the water to go for many parts of the year. You can see it down at the bottom of the hill where, um, the parkway, um, the walkway is. And you can see the water on the side there, just ponding. The Marmen lot, which was the first house I did when I left. Uh, my dad's company, used to have a dry piece of ground there. It's not anymore and it ponds for much of the year. That's the last property down on the right. Um, the other thing is with current technology, particularly pipe burst technology. You can put a sewer pipe anywhere without disturbing land and it's usually cheaper than digging it up. I'm doing two projects right now, one where we had to go underneath an elm tree, elm tree. In, uh, Chaby Chase, right off of Brookville Road. And it's one of the only elm trees in the area and, um, we're able to put the pipe in. Without, um, disturbing the ground or the tree, because you use this new technology that's able to burrow through. Um. That's, um.
They will let you do that with the sewer? Uh, it has to be pitched to grade and inspected? So you can't, you can't run a, a, a mole through the ground and expect it to be at the two percent grade required by WSC. For thirty feet, well, they will pass that.
I'll give you the name and the number of the people that do it. A lot of the larger companies have the equipment. Um, the ones I do, it uses an existing drain. And, um, it burrows using the existing drain and it's, it's very sophisticated and it's really expensive for the, the, the equipment is. But they, the people save by not having the landscape, with the, you know, tearing up the yard. And having to replace all the landscaping and. You know, it's something that's done all the time. All the big, um, plumbing firms have this equipment. I know someone that has a smaller firm that I use. Um, and I'll be happy to give you the number.
And you're referring to the, the sanitary sewer?
Yes. We've done it for years with the, uh, with the old lead and, uh, lines. Um, but now they've come with a much more sophisticated equipment that allows the, uh. The missile to go underground. Um, but you have to, you know, maybe it isn't, wouldn't be a good choice here, but it does exist and I've used it.
Yes, don't you consider this? This is the game you have in that discussion.
Well, I'm not an expert on, uh, on pipe bursting, but. I mean, maybe it would work here for that, but you have additional utilities with water, gas, electric also coming on the right-hand side of the house there. Um, so it's not just the sewer line.
Okay. Well, I understand. I'm just saying it's a possibility because I've, you know, I have to do it on my projects. Well, you know, I do all historic work, so I don't have much of a choice.
Right.
It's not, I don't do new work.
Why don't we, why don't we have the, um. Can Mr. Bump answer that question?
Uh, Doug, I, I don't know if you know anything about this. Might, you might have had to step away. Um. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, it, part of, part of it is WS, you know, WSC, so I, I, I don't. I don't know what WSC is, uh, allows or requires.
Okay. Okay, who's next?
They required us to open the ditch to abandon the sewer on each side of that tree within. You know, it's probably six feet on the street side and probably the same on the outside. There was a ditch that was down ten feet. Big enough for, uh, plumbers to get down there and had to be benched enough to prevent, uh, collapse and so then. That's, that's what's happened there so far.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Vanessa Pia on yet another Cumberland. Couple doors, I mean, we're next door to Jamie, I mean, Russell. And I am going to put another vote in for the cherry tree, which seems to have been, you know, the horse's blood bond. But if there is any way to work around it as, you know. Was just being suggested, I, I would really encourage it. No, you're going to have to stroke by the time we're done with it. It's just that we've been here for, since nineteen ninety. And our house had already been remodeled before we moved into it. It had been remodeled twice before a tree fell on and knocked roof off of that. Um, so it's had so many iterations and we've done two or three and. We've tried our best to keep same side of the house on, you know, as quickly untouched. It, it hasn't been completely untouched, but it was more of a stare while they're not added there. Um, so our footprint really hasn't changed that much, but every single time. We are at bottom of, we're on this letting hill, so we're right in the middle of it. And there's a significant drop between the house above us and on house. And our yard for at least twenty years has been a swimming pool, we never abandoned. I have photographs, it's just because it always astounds me. Um, we had a significant, uh, rain garden type project put in. Uh, last year to, pretty much all of there, uh, and gotten. Uh, and it has helped, it has helped, but our. Part that has helped is the part that's already mostly flat. It would, it doesn't really, you didn't have to address too much of an additional slope where water would be coming in. Up until that time, the water from the uphill neighbor. We had, uh, stone steps put in, apparently originally slightly uphill from our house. It was a barn at the turn of the century. And they must have had steps to the barn, so we replaced those with, you know, stone steps. Which are really pretty and the water would come down and look like a waterfall. And there was nothing dramatic between their yard and ours. It was just that it dropped off that much. Um, it, it was just really incredible. So I can't quite picture. How, I know with all these, we have had underground pipes, we've had. Pipes that emptied out on top of the ground. We have a combination of things now. We have the rain garden. And all through these different processes, there has been so much mud. Sloshing down the hill and into the yard, um, where the latest version, we have a berm that. Said the top of the slope before it goes down to Jamie and Russell's. I think that's helped, that's more than them. Um, but it, it's, when we had some of our work done, we. Had, we dug out the basement, thinking my parents were going to move in. And they had, they saw water come a stream. There was a stream of water coming through, through the basement. Yeah, um, and we've always been told that there was a stream that went down through that part of the hill, still wants handsome. Um. So I, I, you know, I just, it just seems like it's a can of worms. Uh, in terms of what may or may not be down there. Is, is there anything that, I have two questions. Besides the tree, if you can avoid the tree, um. It's the first one that comes out in, in the rear. It's, it's like someone that's friends flying back. I'm not, but. A little too poetic, you know, you forgot the sewer, but. Is, have, did you consider, is it even a possibility to put the driveway? I'm not going to ask you, I'm not suggesting you're going to change it, you know, but did you, was there an option to put the driveway on the other side?
Not really. There's a street tree there. There's a, I guess, I think it's a little, um, it would have required a curb cut there. And, and, you know, the grave falls off more on that side, so, you know, I did ask the, the architect that early on, so, no.
And was it, were you able to consider the kind of driveway that just has like cement strips or concrete? All the stone strips that?
Uh, well, again, the. The, uh, Gabby's Broadway is going to remain. That's, that's gravel and. There's a chain, maybe you can tell us how much room there is between the gravel Broadway. Or the property line and the house of the mudroom entrance on that side of the house. We had one ten feet there, right?
Oh, look at the plan here.
For the center of the driveway.
So, I don't think the town.
Yeah. So we have fifteen feet from the side of the property line to the mudroom and with. The shared driveway, we wouldn't really be able to do wheel tracks like you're talking about. It ju- just wouldn't line up properly with that shared apron. You know, you wouldn't be able to follow the path down to the garage.
Is there a confinade in there now?
Yes.
But right at the street?
Yes.
Yes.
Small.
And that is going to be digging?
No.
No.
Um, but the thing, and I don't, I'm not sure what, uh, I mean, uh. Matt or Doug or Chain can answer this better than I, but whether or not they would even let us put gravel on that slope there. I don't, you know, I think the previous driveway doesn't work there. But the tree, that cherry tree is in that, back, to get back to the, to the garage. That was what I was going to ask. Chain about considering some sort of remediation for that tree, but, um. I don't think it's going to work.
Did you, did you notice?
Um.
One question I have in mind.
Hold on.
Well, I don't think that's, I don't think that the impervious, I don't think that the pervious drive, the pervious pavers are used for aprons. Doug, maybe you can confirm that?
I'm going back to slope. The apron's going to remain.
Oh, oh, oh.
From the apron back, it starts slipping down and there's certainly gravel there and.
Oh, oh.
The county certainly won't let us put gravel on a slope like that, but I don't know if the town. Well, will let you do, but.
That's not something that we ever considered, to my knowledge. I think the county considers gravel driveway impervious the same way it does concrete, actually.
That's correct.
Doesn't make sense.
Did you, did you, did, did, Vanessa, do you have another question?
No, no, just one more.
Okay, thank you. Who?
I don't know if I need to stand up.
Yeah, please come over to the lectern so people can see you. Tell us your name and, because this is all being recorded.
Alright, so. Uh, Chris Borick, I live, uh, forty eight twenty three Cumberland. I have been in this room. Since about eight years ago, when you got, for this long, since you guys approved my house. And so, um. I don't, I don't want to file on too much of a, there's just a little bit. Um, I, I'm not at all kind of anti-grown. I think you can make a nice, like, I think it's part of, kind of what communities. Turn to, because that's just where it's going. The question I, when I see these in full disclosure, I'm. An interested party because it's going to be built down, that's a thing in my, in the year, but. And, uh, so just, just bear word, oh, I'm thinking about this property in mine. I was surprised to see how many trees are kind of cut down to make it so you can have a two-car garage in the back. When we, when we built, we couldn't do that. I mean, just we had a giant, we had two big trees in our back. And there was a fenced off area and we just couldn't do. And so the question I have is like, how much of this is necessary? And so the question I have is like, how much of this is necessary? Like, do you really have to cut down the cherry tree? Or is it really just a convenience to make it so you have this giant two car garage in the back that isn't there now? I just, that's a thing I don't really get. But my understanding of the rules of Somerset were, hey, you know, trees are just don't like chopping that. And I see a lot chopped down here. So I just don't, you know, I don't fully under, I don't know your plan, Paul, but I don't want to say I know where you're getting through. I was surprised to see that, so.
They love trees. I love trees, but they also love stormwater management. So regardless of the garage or not, the trees that you're talking about, typical now that garage would have to go through the stormwater management, bio retention facility. And this one, this is a holly tree that's really in pretty bad shape anyway.
So I don't know, I didn't know that holly trees, I'll leave that to over.
That's true. They're in ancient, a hallway, they're not too certain of shape. It's not exactly, it's not good condition.
The general, I guess the general question I have, and again, I don't know more than two or three, but is it is it really a matter of you need these things for the big garage in back? Or you can have a plenty nice house in this neighborhood without having to go over. And we're a new redevelopment place. And I guess that's the question I have. And it's gonna, it's gonna come, it's gonna come up over and over. And I remember thinking about it when we did it. I asked the same question, we had two big trees in our back. And I'm like, you know, we were coming from a place where we had a waiting burger rush and we're down to one car garage. And I was like, okay, that's good government work. This is kind of protecting the neighborhood that we live in. So I, at that point, chose not to buy it, you know, everyone needs to do what they want to do, right? But it, it strikes me that there is a town staying with you and just trying to understand what the rules are. And I, I worry, again, I don't know you, but I worry that this is, you know, to some extent, a new build means let's just raise all the trees. And I don't think that's the kind of what those neighborhoods have. You guys know the neighborhood with them. I just, I don't know. So, sorry, I don't mean this. And also, Dave, I believe in the cherry trees.
Definitely for your comment.
One, one question I had, I think on the street of Cumberland.
Let's let, and we'll let you come. Let's.
Marilyn Edwards. I live on Drummond downhill.
Can you back up to us?
Nope, I'm about eight houses.
Give us your address for the room.
Four eight three four Drummond. And I went to your property this afternoon and saw actually where what we call the creek starts. And a six inch pipe is not one we have. We have in our backyard, probably they go down three feet. Is it, some of it's three feet deep? The creek and its floods in the spring, it's on regularly in the spring and summer. So a six inch pipe, I don't care what kind of storm management you have is not going to do. And it sounds like your house, it may be, I thought the creek started with you. It obviously starts starting her up.
Originally, yeah, I think.
Because we had understood that that whole hill used to be an ag research center because of all this Maxx Springs. So, yeah, I appreciated all your questions about where is the water going? It's coming to us.
Shane, you speak about six inch pipe, but I don't know what six inch pipe to talk about.
Storm management.
Four or inch and six inch, really just going into the bio retention pond. And then from there, it works by gravity. So each, you know, you can't put five downspouts into a six inch pipe. And each have their size for their, for their load. So Shane, you he's done the calculations for them.
Yeah. And Bob Works was talking about the flooding. I mean, it comes, it comes from Cumberland and every spring we get flooded. So.
I understand all the houses down along the, the walking path along the culvert down. That's just a swamp down there.
Yep.
It's, it's not from just a lot. It's all the Drummond.
But you're planning to cover, you're planning to cover over that back porch.
No.
That's what the plans were.
Well, we've got a rock going there and that water's going into this bio retention. That's where it's going. And Shane has always told us that his size to handle a thin ear of blood. If you have other questions for Shane.
Just comment any of that, yeah.
You know, I've, I've been down through the woods there and, you know, I drive along that path frequently and it's, you know, it's, it's a mess there. I don't know why. It's like it's backed up to that concrete culvert. And when they built that, they shouldn't, you know, put a collection drain there and added it to that water that flows a little falls free. But that was never done, so it's just a wet.
No, but I'm talking about from, from you, they closed one property down and then it comes over to Drummond and, and cut straight down all our backyards.
So I, I'd like to clarify two things that I think will help answer your question. Number one, we're not conveying water with a six inch pipe. The six inch pipe is the drain for the bio retention. The bio retention's holding all the water and then it's letting it out through a six inch pipe. And the goal of any stormwater management is to slow the water down to a pre-construction level as if there was no house there, not the house that's there now as if it was just woods. So that's what the calculations show and that's what we're trying to do with this or do, what we're doing with this bio retention facility. So the six inch pipe is letting water out after it's been collected in the facility, infiltrated down through the planting media in that facility, through a perforated pipe and then out the bottom. So we're not taking like a six inch pipe full of water and spraying it into that drainage way. It actually flows out very, very slowly. And also I think a point that gets a little bit missed is that the existing house that's there has no stormwater management at all. So we're accounting for this entire project with this stormwater management, which actually makes.
Next time it rains, I invite you to come to my yard.
I, I will do that. Maybe there's something we could do for you.
So, one question.
Just step up. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so final question is, so it's a lot of house, I think everyone understands it's a big home. It's a big driveway. It's a lot of concrete. There really isn't any green space or ground. There's half the trees are, are being removed. And because of that, there's a very complicated bio retention water system, which sounds like when I first saw this, I was like, I don't even, I don't have an engineering degree. I don't even know. I had to call a friend who's an architect to interpret this for me. But my question is, on this street, we've, all the neighbors have actually worked very hard to maintain the water on the property. When Vanessa did her renovation, she was like incredibly thorough with, I don't know what she did, but we don't have water flowing onto our property. We've done work so that our landscaping holds the water. We have zero water issues. What recourse do the neighbors have when if the bio retention system doesn't work? What am I supposed to do if then my basement is wet or other neighbors are impacted? What happens? Like we all are relying on this to the hearing.
That's what you're telling me. Well, you can certainly consult your own attorney. I can't give you advice, but I can say generally that in, in Maryland, water's allowed to flow downhill. But if someone unnaturally captures the water and channels it at a concentrated point to a neighbor, that creates a nuisance which can create a private public action.
I mean, I'm not looking to like some neighbors or whoever buys that house. I mean, I, I also think the house that's currently there, the footprint of that house is about maybe nine hundred square feet with twenty trees on the property. So I think saying that like this is much more sophisticated, it's sophisticated for like a very good reason. It just, going back to Chris's point of like when he built his home, how the reason why he came into this neighborhood was because of the trees, how he had to follow these restrictions. I just wonder, it feels a little bit like, why are we losing our way here? I think what makes Somerset so unique is the fact that we have these historic homes, that we have a cherry tree that's been there for a hundred years. I just, I don't know if this home, it's maybe a great home. I just don't know, is this the home that's needed in this neighborhood on that type of lot with what's back there with all the complications related to water, the creek going underneath it? I know we have codes, we have other things to conform by, but this just seems so completely over the top and excessive and also.
Okay, I know.
Jamie Donovan about new water, water problems. Part of this easement agreement that I was asked to prepare deals with the drainage pipe that they have put under their driveway and it discharges the property line on a property. So that's gonna remain. I'm obligated to respect that. So yes, the water, even though it is from your house is coming across, it's gonna flow across this driveway.
Okay, so before we add the comment portion, are there any more comments or questions from our citizens?
Sorry. I was, I was supposed to ask you guys.
So let me just, let me just reassure everyone. So the purpose of the hearing and the comments, the council is listening to everybody's saying and they will make a decision based on the facts and the code and your comments. So it's good that you're all here and making these comments.
So, sorry, I was supposed to ask you guys a question. I did, I did have, and I would be quick because I appreciate.
It's, it's, you know, this is the process working.
But it is.
How the process works.
I, I don't know if it's a question for the, the council or not because you were.
The, the question now is for the applicant or the staff. And then your comments are for the, for the council to consider.
The question I have for the council, if they could answer, but if they can't, that's fine. But what, just is there a kind of a standard rule about kind of what, what level of tree protection there should be?
Well, that's a question for the staff and the attorney.
So, sorry, let me just, I know I've talked to Matt about this. It's been super helpful. But I thought that part of, part of the issue here is that there are kind of objective rules about height and water management. But there are subjective rules about when is a tree allowed to be cut down versus not.
See, that's what they're making it.
Council choice. And I guess the question is, is that right? And if it is, like, is there a general rule of thumb that developers, residents have to understand what's reasonable and what's not? And I don't think, my understanding is, I don't think any of the things you should raise, raise the plates. The new build is not entitled ever to be cut down, but I just don't know what the rule of thumb.
Okay, that's a very good question and the attorney. Yeah, so I like how you phrase it with respect to building requirements. Most of those are objective. There's a certain setback that must be complied with with respect to tree removals. It is more subjective. There's a list in the code of criteria that the council applies in deciding whether or not a tree can come down. But there's no black and white rules as to whether or not that removal should be granted. And that's why we have hearings. So the citizens will comment and the council will weigh all these comments. So, good question. Okay, are there any further, before we close the public comment period of the hearing? Are there any more comments or questions? I would just like to reply.
Can I ask a question?
I have a question too. No, who is your question for?
Mr.?
I think we have to, don't we have to, have to redo one? Don't we have to close the meeting? It hasn't been closed yet. No, but can the council ask a question now? Yeah, okay.
I was just wondering if the house is gonna be raised from the land that it's currently sits at. And do we?
It's gonna be at grade similar, but maybe even lower than the house is there.
Okay, so you're not raising the land. So, okay, I think that was my question.
It's okay. So there, I, I'd like to follow up on that. Okay, sure. So, because I was wondering about the height and on the plans it talks about now, the average grade in front of a closed house is two hundred and one point zero feet, which conforms to the dark black lines on the drawing. And I have to apologize or ask for some preparedness here. It seems like every contractor comes in has something different format. And so we're always trying to interpret and understand what we're looking at. But as I look at this, underneath that black line says two hundred and ninety one for the front of the house. There's a red line that says two hundred and ninety point zero, which I'm interpreting to be the grade of the land today before this built, which suggests that you're increasing the height by one foot, which would then suggest that the average of, the average height of the house is one foot higher than the city of Kansas in this chart under the general notes. Can you try that?
Okay. Did you hear the question?
So there's a question on the average grade?
On the grade at the front elevation, there was.
Yeah.
I'm not giving the plans.
You can't interrupt now.
Some of the blonde or red, they indicated existing grades and then.
Yeah, the red line, yes, the red lines indicate existing grade and the black lines in the black spot elevations are proposed grade.
So it's up one foot.
So it's up one foot, but as noted in the table here, when you, we figure out the weighted average of point grades for the wall length, blah, blah, it's supposed to be on, based on the most restrictive level, either pre-development or post-development when you're determining the height of the house.
That's correct.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is that the actual height of, that, it doesn't seem like you did the most restrictive. It seems like you did the most liberal interpretation and you're basing your height on the developed landscape that is one foot higher than the current landscape. Just, just as I try to look at the drawing.
Are you looking at the boundary survey site zoning compliance plan?
I'm looking at the plan that is in our package. That shows the proposed two story house in black on top of.
It's titled block that shows his own compliance.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wanting to make sure we're looking at the same drawing so that I don't misspeak.
Boundary survey site zoning compliance, sheet one of one.
What, what's the date on that? There was a recent revision to that.
One thirty one twenty three.
Twenty three.
In the revision block above that, sir.
I don't, there's nothing in the revisions file.
Okay, then you have an old, an old copy. I sent Matt a new drawing on Friday.
Oh, mine says two one twenty four.
Two one would be the correct drawing.
Here, do you want to see this?
Just.
Again, mine.
What can I see? Wow, wow, yours is much different than it.
That's why I wanted to make sure we were looking at the same drawing. So you'll see there on the left hand side, the house is basically on the existing grade. And then on the right hand side, the proposed grade is lower and that's what you use to calculate the average grade.
Okay. I'm confused though, why the, why the existing topography lines have changed from one site plan to another site.
The existing did not. The house moved.
Oh, the house moved.
That's what they think. We had to take the front porch over. We had to get it out of the forest.
Yeah, in coordination with park and planning for the record plat of this project, we agreed to move the house forward to stay out of that drainage way area. So that's the difference in the drawing that you're seeing. The house used to be about eight feet farther back to accommodate a full porch. And that porch has since been removed.
I understand my confusion.
Well, we were able to clarify. Well, we were able to clarify that.
I want a question for Dr. Featherstone. What is the condition of the trees in the location of the proposed garage?
Uh, they're in decline.
Those, those are trees that are in decline. Okay, thank you. I don't, I'll never do that.
Okay, so the town attorney has reminded me where we are in the hearing and we are still, the, the record is still open. So what I want to do is first ask the council if they have any more questions, see if there are any final comments or questions from our citizens and then I have to give the applicant an opportunity for, so I'll start.
I got one other question. Um, going back to the fire and cherry. Um, if you were to go back to W S S S C and they were to say, oh yes, you could use a borer and you don't need to take that transfer. Would you be able to save the cherry at that point? Are there other factors that would require insurance?
Well, the egress to the garage is gonna conclude saving the cherry because we, we have to save ground right away. And then I leave this ten feet and then I don't know precisely, maybe Dover can tell us how far off the property around this, but it's it looks to me as gonna be right in the whole path.
So you would not be able to save even with that?
Is it?
That's it?
That's sort of right.
Um, yeah, so the trees that, that are being proposed to be planted, um, are those trees of like significance and I mean, are they, are they just like a shrub or?
There's a, there's a schedule for it.
What are we planting street? Like what we plant on a public land?
Okay. So they're like, you know, it's just gonna be like these little trees, right?
Yeah, I mean, don't survive the best. You know, once they're planted, they don't take that much care. If you do a larger tree, they pay more care. A lot of times they don't survive. Um, then I've said this before, if you plant a two, two to two and a half, you plant a four-inch tree, over forty-five years, they become about the same size. Because a larger tree takes a longer time to establish.
Yeah.
Smaller trees establish right away and start from.
Yeah. And then, but do, do we have like, do we know, you know, with these established trees that are there? Like, how does it work in terms of like, you know, obviously trees like absorb a ton of water runoff and through their roots and through all of that stuff. When you take out an existing tree, that's a big, broad, you know, long-standing tree and replace it with like, you know, one that has like a trunk like that. I mean, how, how do we calculate for the water change? It, I mean, is there, I mean, the, the, those kind of roots will not never match that absorption.
I think that for long-term, um, like percolating water for runoffs, that whether trees there or not really doesn't matter. I mean, there's some resistance on surface trees, but.
We are always told that like these trees like suck in so much of this groundwater and like, you know, when it rains and stuff. So I would just imagine that.
They do suck in groundwater, but I, with stormwater management, which I'm looking for is the actual initial runoff is what you're getting.
Right, well, and that's like the thing.
So and the bio retention, a, a, a tree on the lot would help as the water percolates down would help soak up the water.
Right.
And it wouldn't go out to the pipe at the end.
Are you guys planning on doing any like rain garden plantings and stuff too?
Bio retention, there's a whole schedule of plants that go in the bio retention, so like that's, you know, it's a structure, a concrete structure that's filled with engineered soils and nutrients planted. So it's not a, it's not a.
But like the attenuate, it's not attenuation device?
Um, no, no.
No.
It's different. Those like little barriers between house lots that just sort of divert water.
No, like attenuation device that like captures the, it's like gravel. It's like a hole and it like captures, you know, water.
Well, the sand, the sand in the device captures the water that holds what slows it down, which is a critical thing. And so you've got the plants absorbing some of the water, the sand slowing down the water. And then what comes down out of the bottom, that is the riprap spreads it out, so it all slowed down very much. And it's also filtered, thank you, yes. And, and that's, that's why it works. And the whole point about, uh, managing stormwater is to slow it down so that it goes into stream slowly, doesn't destroy anything that way. Um, that's, it does accomplish.
Right, but all of the things that we talk about here are just the capturing the house's water. It doesn't include the runoff that comes from the hill down.
Right, the, we can't make an individual homeowner responsible for the water flowing downhill from other.
No, I understand that, but it is like whenever, but every time that you change a house and you line in that footprint of the house, you take away, you know, permeable surfaces, it all matters.
Why don't you save this for?
All right.
Did you have any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Okay, so now to the citizens, any new question or comment? Okay, and now Mr. Kelly, do you? Do you, is there any, do you have any rebuttal? Okay, so now, um, I am closing. The, the record is closed. No new information shall be considered or submitted for the record after this point. So now I'm turning it over to the council president for the council to deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. And the council may make a motion, not shall, they may make a motion on this, on this application. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I thank you to all of the residents to, to really join me share your thoughts and concerns. I wish I thought this is, this is a large house. But it's my understanding that's fully compliant with code, which.
Not really, I mean.
As of the date of submission, it's fully compliant with the code. They're just, just minus one, if if the trees, the trees were healthy in the backyard where the Roger go, I would I would save the trees, but um, based, it's my limited experience with council actions is for the house itself, if you need to remove a tree, you can remove the tree. It's just my initial thoughts, probably. We'll probably go around a couple of.
I, I got various things to say. And again, everybody, thank you for your comments. And they're said with feeling, there's no doubt about that. And I know. And I am upset too that this is a giant house. However, we have a code and we have to live by that code. And the code does not restrict the size of walls. It restricts their heights now, but that happened after this one was submitted, so we can't apply that. We did restrict porches and other external things. We've done that. Um, what we have done successfully is apply stormwater management codes and build stormwater management codes. We spent a lot of time doing that. And, and builders coming in now are hitting that, that code and having to work very hard to satisfy our code way beyond the county code. And that's why you're hearing about the bio retention device because that's our code is driving that. So when it is within the code, we have to find a reason to say no, and I cannot find a reason to say no for this one. That's what I was going to. And that's it.
I guess what surprises me is that we're gonna let the cherry tree come down. I, I thought that we didn't let things like that happen. You know, I, I thought we just didn't let a big tree like that come down because we're gonna build a house. You know, I, I would think the house could have been designed to keep the tree. Maybe, maybe not. Okay, but I do think I think that if you're really gonna live in the house.
Okay, this is.
Okay, okay. I just, okay, all right. All right, I won't say that. All right. I just think that, um, I think it is a crime that we're, that would that, that this house was not designed to keep the tree and that we can't enforce that. So if we have to allow this permit, I do it with a very heavy heart. And, um, you know, so.
Well, I just, I don't really think that this is in like the spirit of our code because, I mean, the problem that we all talked about and why we established this stormwater code is because the more that every, everyone changes these houses and these footprints, like the more water runoff we all see. And I mean, it is a significant problem down at the bottom of Cumberland with, I mean, it's not draining right now at all.
Shannon, no, that's not true. At the moment.
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you. Um, and so, you know, I think that I'm gonna talk to everyone, I guess. Um, you know, I think that this is a massive home with now a double wide concrete driveway after we already said in our code that we wanted a permeable driveway leading back to a two-car garage, which on anyone who lives on the bottom half of Cumberland will tell you, you can sell a house for an extraordinary amount of money on Cumberland without a two-car garage. And I know that everyone wants one, but you know, there are, they also want trees and they want to be able to not have flooded basements and you know, they want all sorts of other things. And so I question then the validity of what we're trying to do with our stormwater management in these situations because you know, every single inch of this property looks to be, um, you know, pretty much maximized. And it just doesn't leave room for, I mean, the street goes like this and it just, it all goes downhill. And so this bio retention thing will hold some stuff in for a little bit, but like then when it rains on top of it and on top of it and on top of it, you know, there's gonna be problems and it's gonna ultimately come down to that bottom of Cumberland and every house along the way. And so, you know, I, I think that taking out the trees is, is really bad because that also takes out the water being able to be sucked up by those trees. And, um, you know, I just, I would prefer that our town code then maybe we make some recommendations to get it so that we can look at pervious versus impervious surfaces. And, you know, so that we don't have this because I saw water running off this land like when it was raining once I was walking by. And I, I think that it's gonna be a problem for the house to possibly, you know. I mean, I know that you'll put in the state of the art, you know, sump pumps and stuff, but I, I just think it's gonna be a problem.
All right, can I say something in response? The house that stands there just now has got no stormwater management on it. It is contributing right now to the flooding that's happening at the bottom of the hill. This house is not going to be contributing to the flooding at the bottom of the hill because it is going to capture the water from the house. So the bottom of the hill will see an improvement as a result of this house.
However, what you don't account for and what none of this accounts for is all of the stormwater like that comes through this house anyways. So the fact that this house stands right now at nine hundred square feet and now it's gonna be, so there's, there's water that is absorbed through these lands, like on that land. Now it's gonna be three thousand square feet or two, twenty-five hundred square feet as like a base. And that is just gonna push the water elsewhere that was just running down. I'm not talking about capturing on it.
The builder is managing that water up to a ten-year storm control, which is way beyond the standard that we require.
Well, he's managing the water coming off of.
Yeah, he's on loan. He's not managing any other.
If you listen, it's actually beyond the law. He's, 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 he's recording the water off the, the patio, the, 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 the concrete at the back.
But Robin, I, I think, um, Shannon's point is well put that if this house is now nine hundred square feet.
Well, like the, it's, I don't know.
And then we're getting much bigger. How could it not make a difference? You know, uh, I don't understand how.
Because, because this, the current home is not capturing any of the stormwater that runs over it.
None?
No, none. That, that's, that's the way houses were built back then. That's it, okay?
So this one is. But so that aspect of it will be in a room. I think question about the driver, which I hadn't thought about because, and we might have to reopen some of the proceedings. Is, is the, the gravel driveway is considered impervious? Then then why is it impervious? We should be requiring impervious or there should be a request for it.
Can I ask, you can ask you, right? I just, I heard someone during the proceeding.
The question is why is a permeable driveway not required? I believe it was because of the slope of the property.
Perhaps it's, it's also the driveway is running along the side of the house and it's within ten feet of the, most of the drivers within ten feet of the house, which means that it has to be impervious when it's back up to the house because that's a danger of the water insufficient to the house.
But that's again, it's just, it goes against like all like what we're, you know, the code that we're doing because we're allowing to have just concrete off a concrete off a concrete. And so therefore then they can't make it, you know, a permeable driveway because it's, you know, there's no room.
The driveway is too close to the house.
Right, because the house is so big.
They are capturing runoff from the driveway in the bio retention. You are right.
If this were a concrete driveway though, that would make it worse, am I right?
Yeah.
Uh, the gravel driveway is actually a bit better than the concrete driveway. It's just that the county doesn't recognize it.
But is it, is, is the gravel going all the way down to the garage? It's, it's turning into concrete. Yeah, so it's a concrete driveway.
At the end.
By the end, I mean, by, yeah, but.
But I mean, again, the bio retention device is capturing that water wrong.
Right, but again, it doesn't capture the runoff from up the street that hits that driveway.
It, it, but, but again, we, we cannot do, we cannot require that of these owners.
I, I know, but what we talked about was that, you know, our town is gonna be in big problems, like if every single person tears down their house and builds giant houses on all of these lots. There is no more place for this water to go. These systems that Montgomery County has set up are a hundred years old. And you see the result in Little Falls right now. It's, it, and so it's part, part of having a stormwater cooler is so that we can do our part with the environment and try to prevent this.
Well, we, we're getting a bit off topic, but the, 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 the we're doing two things. Um, every new home that comes in will have a good stormwater management plan, which over time is gonna reduce the amount of water flowing through backyards because as new homes come in, they will control the water. On top of that, we are also surveying current microwatersheds in town, especially the ones that cause flooding, see what the town can do to improve flood control. And that is actually happening very soon, literally starting this month. Um, so we're, we're doing two things to manage the water. But right now it is this house that we're considering and they have a good management plan for the water next one, management plan for the water. As I said, I'm upset that it's such a large house. I, I don't like it. I think it's too large, but I can't do anything about that in our code. That's it.
So our, our neighbors talked, our, our neighbors talked about that cherry tree. It's just the whole subject of tree removals and tree re-plantation. Is there? It's just excessive things. Uh, builder indicated difficult to do in the construction because without moving cherry tree because of limits on access to the driveway. Can we modify those limits so that you can go around the tree on the driveway? Is that a possibility? I'm just looking, I'm trying to explore options to save the cherry tree. Are there any realistic options?
I, 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 I did honestly play around with this at home. Um, and I didn't see any, I would have to confess. I you know. It's, um, it's in the way of many different things.
So let's go around yet, I'm still. So I'm struggling because I don't take her away. Like the size of the house and number of trees being taken down. I appreciate. The robust stormwater management plan, which I think will be of. Human benefit to the town, but I'm still have. Arbor reservations and and I know the the neighbors comments. So quite quick, I'm. I I don't see beneath the like the two-car garage. And even if the trees are in decline, I'm not sure that's a good enough reason to. Move those trees for. A two-car garage. And that's just me personally, I don't know, Robin, have any thoughts on the garage?
We can, we can't stop it.
Yes, we can. Oh, we can say we don't want those trees.
Well, first of all, the trees that you're talking about are ones that are in decline.
All are, I mean.
Well, no, the flowering cherry is not in decline.
No, I mean, in our town, all of our street, I mean, every tree is in decline, I mean.
No, the flowering cherry is not in decline.
But. A lifetime of ten or twenty or fifty more years, so.
Right, I mean, that depends like what kind of decline you're talking about, like dead and falling about to fall down is one thing.
So 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 my point is. From my perspective, I see. The difference between. Allowing a builder to build. The house versus accessory structures like garage or I recall a. Uh, construction lower Essex where they want, where they make swimming pool. And they're gonna take down it, you remember this, Robin, you were the. Committee Chair, I think the Environment Committee at the time. And it was very helpful that can it be treated, we'll have to come down to swimming pool. I voted against taking down the canopy tree, Marnie Shaw voted with me. Um, the other council members did not, so it should come down and swim pool. But I think that's a fun. That's it's fiction that I make that I believe is an acceptable distinction to me. So I just pointed out that someone made a question, doesn't think that's.
I um, I um, I guess. What I would think, what I would, two things. One is I would not approve this permit. To be sent back to your architect. Tell him to find a way to save the cherry tree. Because if you don't save that cherry tree, you've really harmed. The people around you. You know, and and um. I think it's really important to sort of save that cherry tree. And I would limit the um, the garage. I'd save the trees and make it a one-car garage. You know, I don't know, can I do that? Can I say that? Can I make that suggestion? You know, I don't know.
Let's have the ten attorney delineate what the option, the decision options are.
Sure, it might be helpful to go over the criteria for permit decisions for tree removals. There are eight factors to be weighed. The desirability of preserving any tree. Because of its age, species, size, or outstanding qualities such as uniqueness, rarity. Or status as a landmark or species specimen. Two, the extent to which the immediate area and the town in general would be subject to environmental degradation. Due to removal of the trees, including but not limited to stormwater management concerns. Three, the number of trees removed from the property within the prior five-year period. Four, whether the tree is diseased, infect insect infested or injured beyond restoration. Whether the tree is in danger of falling presents a threat of injury to life or property. The hardship or unusual practical difficulty which the applicant may suffer if a permit for the requested action is not issued. The extent to which the tree removal is necessary to achieve proposed development. Redevelopment, land use, utility construction or utility maintenance. And the extent to which there is no reasonable alternative. And the extent to which any replanting plan posed by the applicant involves planting native canopy trees. That are at least two and a half inches in diameter at the time of installation, chosen from a list of approved planting trees. Conservation landscaping and rain gardens or other stormwater drainage measures to address any stormwater management concerns. So those are the the criteria. Based on the criteria there, I would focus the council discussion on. The desirability of the specific trees and whether there's environmental degradation. And not whether. The house is too big because as Councilmember Barr noted. The factor you're applying here is is to the extent removal is necessary to achieve proposed development. Which is allowed by the code. There's, there's not a factor in here that. You know, allows you to consider house size that complies with the code, but. Uh, is otherwise deemed too large. However, you can consider. The loss to. I'm sorry, the environmental degradation that results from removal of trees. And the desirability of the specific trees in question.
So to answer, answer our help's question, which was whether a motion that um. Required to save the tree and to attend the size of the garage, doesn't that meet the criteria?
Well, with respect to the the cherry tree in the front, you know, there, you know, there has been testimony about its qualities. So that would fall into one of the the criteria. And with with respect to the. The detached garage, I think probably more discussion is needed there because that wasn't clear to me what. Well, you know, is is reducing the garage actually, you know, even possible? I don't think it's been discussed. It probably should be. If that's gonna be a consideration. And what are the qualities in, including? What environmental degradation would result from loss of those two trees? And the replanting point on, we haven't discussed.
So I could make a motion?
Um, you can make a motion, I'm just saying, I think there's, there hasn't been enough discussion. For me to. So advise you on whether.
We could open the area and 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 that's could ask questions for us.
Yes.
Okay.
Shall we do that?
Sure.
Do we have to vote? So I knew we were open the year. Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Okay, so the procedure we do.
So it's reopened for the. Purposes the council desires and then just like the regular hearing, all interested parties should be given the opportunity at the time.
So so what what we'll do is we will um, go through a round of questions and you. So you can ask questions to the applicant. Instead.
Okay.
That's present circuit.
Doctor Featherstone, can you provide any additional details on the condition of those two trees? In the footprint of the proposed garage?
The the hallway is maybe um. Thirty to forty percent of what it should be, far as always, spot, you know, it's pretty far. Um, the ash is the same one.
Yeah, but they're not.
But I mean, they're, I. They, I mean, they could last like that for years, but.
Is that during European ash for now, that basically would not cover ash trees when they mature.
Okay, thank you, um. And for our applicant, can you describe what the. Impact would be on your home if you only had a one-car garage? And provide flexibility and arrangements so perhaps you might need to remove both trees.
Well. Uh Shane, the. If we were to put a one-car garage there along with the stormwater. Management facility, is that gonna? Do anything to benefit those two trees?
I think those trees would would still be significantly impacted. One would still be in the footprint of the garage. I'm looking at the plan on my other, my other screen here and um, the other one would be. You know, having the the wall maybe a couple of feet from it. Depending on exactly on where that. One-car garage got sided. I mean, it would probably, the gar- garage would probably have to stay. Toward the right-hand side of the lot in order to get a car down the driveway and into it. So then we're on top of both of those trees still.
Okay, um. I think that's, that's all I have.
Cause we've already been questioned.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, he gets to, he gets to revive. And he can ask a question.
He can ask a question with staff.
Okay, oh, he has question of staff. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure you saw the excavation to that abandoned sewer around that tree. But they did it one day, the next day it was inspected back. But it's pretty substantial and it's gonna impact the health of that tree. Uh, going forward, so is there any way to ascertain the? The impact of the work that's already happened there? Uh, how it's gonna affect that tree? To go to an extraordinary effort to preserve it is to have it die. And letting all the utilities, the electric and the gas. As low as the plumbing down in that root zone. Is it um?
Yeah, you take the sewers on one side and the gas and the. Electric are on the other side, isn't it?
They're all on the right-hand side to avoid the street tree on the left.
Yeah.
Just.
The water and sewer were existing there.
You referred to the cherry tree.
I just don't have the luxury of looking at the plan, but. I thought they would follow the utility coming down the right side. Yeah.
I don't know, somewhere.
Okay, Councilor Barr, you have any questions? Derek, ask him, oh, no, hell, you're, it's your turn.
My turn, sorry. Um. I want to save the cherry tree, bottom one. I want you to figure out how to save the cherry tree. You must have a very clever architect. I'm sure who can go back and design something, maybe cut things down, I don't know. But this cherry tree is really important to this community and to your neighbors. And um. I don't know, when I built my house, I did a major renovation and I said to my architect. Don't make my neighbors hate me. And he did a great job. And they didn't hate me. And uh, the house that took the test of time, I could sell it easily tomorrow. If I wanted to sell my house tomorrow, I could do it. But I could and.
But then I answered the question.
So I guess, and I want, I want to implore you to go back to your architect to save that tree.
Well, that would be a motion.
Okay, that's another one, this might undo.
Need to, I think, wait a minute, I. Mister Ten, didn't? Didn't she need to get this information on record? Whether he's able to save the tree?
Well, for the criteria, when. So.
Can you clarify that?
The council needs to make findings of fact. In order to support its conclusions. Under the code. So I was encouraging. The council to discuss and obtain more facts that would support its ultimate decision under the criteria of the code.
So do, so, so. That's our Halloween question, the applicant that tree, so does he need to answer that? To the best he's able.
Yes.
Best, yeah. So, so.
Yes, it was an emotional question too, but. I admit to that, but can you go back to your architect? And say, I've been asked, I've been begged to save that cherry tree. What can you do for me? Can you do that?
Well, the house has been moved forward as a requirement from Department of Natural Resources. So moving it back is not an option. Moving it to the left is not an option because we're already pushing up against the building restriction line. So. To do what is asked is gonna require a complete redesign of the home and it's gonna be. At huge expense, which. And time delay at this, I I don't see that as a. A viable option, I'm, you know, I'm.
Well, you made the house smaller.
You gave your.
Could you keep it?
I think he gave us an answer.
If you made the house smaller, could you save the cherry tree?
Can I, can I add, David?
Pardon?
Can I add?
Can he add, add something?
Sure, I wanna answer her question. Um, we have different design constraints on this property also with the shared driveway. And the town code only allowing that one apron, that's the only access this property has for a driveway at all. And you can't get a front-loading traditional garage from that shared apron. So even if we were to look at a apron on the left-hand side of the property. We'd be asking the town for a variance on the code to get a second curb cut. And then we'd be impacting a street tree that's on the other side. So I'm definitely sympathetic to all the trees. But with the site constraints, it's really the only way the driveway can go in. And the water in the sewer were existing in that location prior to. Um, Mister Kelly purchasing this property.
And the driveway has always been there, though, it's always been a shared driveway, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So I don't understand. What I I maybe because I have not seen the property in a long time. I admit I have not, you know, um, been there to, with Noodle the South, but it's always been a shared driveway. The tree has always been there and there's been a shared driveway. So I don't see why. You can't, I don't, I don't understand Shane, what you're telling me.
But one thing I'll, I'll say is that we're obligated by the easement agreement not to use the gravel driveway for construction, so. That also brings that tree further into the. Envelope, I have to have equipment there to back to my home, have have access from the humans to run down the right side of the house.
Understand.
It's a small, small site.
Okay.
Um, why, why does the, why did Montgomery County make you move the house forward?
It was the, it was the mayor of state of Maryland Department of Natural Resources when the house. When you bought the house, it was a house that was constructed on part of two lots. And as part of the application for new home, it applied to do a subdivision to combine the street. Um, in that process, um, Department of Natural Resources has to sign off on it. Um, and they come out and. Evaluate the site and our inspector, like. A person who reviewed our plan met us up there several times and identified the back of the corner as a forest. And with the wet that back there, he said we could not. Root trees from a forest and we couldn't work in the forest and. Um, we had to move the stormwater manager, the pillar we designed, stormwater management facility to keep. Out of the root zone of the poplars and the neighbors and back in the brummin trees. Um, so we had to move the house forward if we. There was no other way to do it.
But so then, it are the trees, does that now? Now is it not considered a forest? Because aren't you removing trees that they said that not to remove?
Now we could still forest and as Doctor Feather said, it would, we're, one of the trees which is. Dead and slated to be removed, can only be removed from the forest, but it has to be cut at the soil level, so it doesn't. You don't dig out the roots, you're not disturbing the roots of the other trees.
You, you have any more questions?
No, I'm good.
I'm gonna do second round of council presence, sir.
Um. This might be for you or for Dr. Featherstone, I'm trying to understand the, you're, you're talking about the forest and the trees because. The, the landscape infiltration device. At least on, on the older. drawing that I'm looking at, all of those trees are removed. But I thought, oh, because this is before Department of Natural Resources worked and stuff.
Well, before we acquiesced to the fact that we had a forest. Uh, rather than go for a drawn-out um. Argument that it wasn't a forest and that would clear the trees and. Um, the impact on the poplars from the habits on Brumman. Uh, we still had to redo the stormwater management facility to get away from those roots, so. That was an easier decision for us, just to move the house forward. And we had to remove the porch, which that was sad to do, you know, the neighborhood. Uh, as a, you know, an old town feel to it, you know, houses with porches are welcoming. That's what I wanted to do, but. Have to sacrifice that to make make room a lot for the house.
Did you?
I mean, I live on permanent, as I said, which has a garage on Warren. It's a small two car garage. I can't get a car in. It's seventeen feet by seventeen feet. So, you know, these, I mean, this garage is smaller than most two car drivers, just because I knew it was. Going to be an issue for the down. I believe it's twenty feet square, so. I was. Glad to be respectful of the.
Thank you.
Moving on areas.
Thank you. You mentioned the. Constraint imposed on your construction process by the. The easement on the drive.
Yeah.
If the town were able to give you some sort of. Variance on that easement for the purposes of the construction project. Would you be able to?
That's a.
Oh, it's a private easement. If the neighbor were to beat you. We I'm just trying to understand. With that space allowing you to. Move your vehicles without having to remove the tree.
Well, knowing the reason for not for bringing that to work on that driveway. Is that they have a, they need to get to the turnaround to charge the electric vehicle. So. They're not gonna wanna have lumber stacked there or, you know, machinery over there. Tearing up the drive driveway. I could restore that, but we're gonna have to back to all that side of the property.
Okay. Thank you. Good for us. I said, Councilor Vardy. I have no further questions.
No questions.
Councilor Vardy.
No questions.
Okay.
Okay, so any citizen, do you have a new? Um, any question? Please, can you come on? And just for the record, this is all.
Okay.
So you have to say your, please say your name again.
Jamie Cap, forty eight thirteen Cumberland. One thing I want to clarify is there is a shared driveway. The tree is next to the driveway now. What I don't understand is that with the driveway where it currently is. There's if if they're using that driveway to come in. It's not that tree should still be able to exist. I understand it's an inconvenience for construction. Also, David Brown had mentioned earlier that he had a way to get to the sewer line. Where the tree would potentially be undisturbed. So it seems like maybe that is something to be that could be explored. The other thing, just to clarify.
Do you want to ask questions?
Um, yeah. Well, I don't know if it's even something to add to Apple. No, it's just something to clarify because I think Debbie, you had asked. Is the driveway there now? And is the tree there now? The driveway is there now. The tree is there now. And one thing I wanted to clarify, I know it's, I've heard a lot, the. Owners of forty eight thirteen want to keep the gravel driveway. We want to keep the gravel driveway. What the easement says is that the material of that driveway. If it's changed, we we will, we it could be an agreed upon material and we could change that driveway. What Mr. Kelly had proposed to us was. Taking the driveway, pouring concrete down the driveway, and then we could split the cost of it because then our driveway would be. Enhanced by concrete, which was like, that was when we said, no, 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 we don't. We don't. Want an enhancement. We're happy to keep our gravel drive, our gravel. That's my better. If there's a way to like. Have the pavers on the driveway or something that would then allow the tree to stay, that would allow for less concrete. It also sounds like code is being interpreted improperly with the slope of the driveway and then pavers not being used. Towards the bottom of the driveway that is incredibly flat. So. Anyway.
Well, I think you have a question for. You ten and for.
Yeah.
Well, maybe Shane, you can, uh, you can answer. I'll 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 let you answer, uh, Ms. Kaplan's question about why you're using concretes at the. Uh, entrance to the garage.
Um, there's mandated setbacks for permeable pavement from foundations. You have to be ten feet from slab on grade and I believe it's fifteen feet. Uh, from in ground foundations for permeable paving. So like along the existing or along the. House where the driveway goes back to the garage, can't be permeable paving because it's too close to the foundation. Same with um, in front of the garage.
Okay. It's just as unfortunate that we can't find a solution that isn't like concrete poured. Everywhere in the back.
Can can I ask?
Yeah, wait a minute. He can ask Shane a question, right?
Yeah. Experience that that cherry tree would be preserved in in the projects that.
I'm sorry, I didn't. I didn't hear that.
Have you seen that? Or do you know of any? Practice that would preserve that, save that cherry tree given the amount of work that has to happen? In that. Correct line where it is with utilities and.
I I'm not an arborist, but I don't see how it could survive the construction. Uh, unfortunately, again, I don't see an alternative on this site either. That makes it um, able to be saved.
It now. The Pepto will put their lines at three feet below ground, so there'll be a trench for that. The gas will be down at eighteen inches. The sewer will be down at nine feet. And the water will be a fourteen or fourteen two inches. And all of that activity coming down the left side of the gravel driveway. Uh, and then somehow or another, we're gonna have to give a share of the lumber and trust some cranes and. Other heavy equipment.
But the.
Around that area.
But the other option is if the house wasn't so big, there would be more space to maneuver.
Well.
I mean, it's like. Over six thousand square feet.
Our planning wasn't around saving that tree. I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was gonna be so contentious that, you know, we have. A jillion regulations we gotta design and build to, I mean, and it's taken a lot of time. So could we have, we could, I hope we have built, designed something there and would preserve that tree, we could renovate the house, but. That's not, that's not.
I mean, I think people had voiced concerns over the trees, like.
Okay, so I think, yeah.
Okay.
It's not a debate. Did you get all your questions answered?
I did. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Two more studies to add. Um, Vanessa, forty eight eleven Cumberland. Um. My question, it and I. In the main is. Do you really need the garage? Uh, there on Cumberland, we are the last house designated as the red. And I don't think that there's any other houses that have that are stark in that stark section. That have. Original garages. Or and the ones that do have garages. The most part haven't been able to use them because they're too small. Um, and there is one house a few doors up from us where they have a garage. That they can't use. The door doesn't close. But they've been told that they can't take it down places. So they have this. Less than satisfactory structure that is dangerous. I guess, because it's a store, I don't know. But my point is personally, I have literally never been replaced with a with a garage from New Jersey, Ohio, Michigan. And then New York City, so I I don't see them as indispensable, but.
Well, let's let it just the question. You got a quick question.
Well, I'm from the other side of the argument there to say. People with hobbies, wood shop. Outdoor furniture, bicycles, all of that stuff. Does that go into the rec room in the basement or unfinished basement? No, a garage is perfect. They take the load, the parking lot for the street. Two cars down in the garage would have. People like that, I think so. Um, so. Uh, I think it's important to have a garage.
Okay, thanks for answering. Okay, anybody else?
I have one question for. Just for prompt. Legal.
You're not allowed to ask this.
I'm not. That I'm perplexed.
You you can ask the council if they want me to answer.
Okay.
Sure.
I'm not.
I will, I will.
No, we. We can, I think you have no.
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
And so you were going, I've looked at you before, I looked at the criteria for permanent decision for removing a tree went through. The so it looks like the big ones are the aggravating factor, the way it gets removal, the desire really to preserve the tree. About cherry tree, I very love cherry tree. Um, I I share that love. Um, the flip side seems to be the hardship or unusual practical difficulty, which definitely they suffered. Um, and I I guess the question I have specifically is, is that something that is? After they've done the design work, or is that something that should be considered upfront? In terms of just the practicality and the hardship that it's.
I don't think it's really a real question. Is it? Well, I think that's his. He's making a comment.
Process question.
I think he's making a comment on the record, right?
The reason I asked the question is legal, because if you were enumerating the different criteria, I just.
I think I'll be. I think that your comment is valuable. To that point there. Is it subject to interpretation?
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Mayor. It's every factor had an equal weight.
I think you're making, I think you're making a valid comment on the criteria. Just leave it at that. I don't think you need.
So I.
I don't think that's something that the attorney can answer. It's up to. It's really up to the council to answer when they make the decision.
Right. I think I understand.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, okay, so, uh. So let me give Mr., before we close the record again, let me give Mr. Kelly, uh, the last opportunity, if you have any rebuttal. Any of this.
Well, I guess the last thing I would say is if if the. Requirements in our zoning and building laws and regulations. Require in stages that if there's a nice tree in front, you go have a design around it. Um, and I've had to do that in the town of Cherry Chase in the past. Then you do that, but to come and design the project. Uh, and then. At this stage of the game, when the project is permitted by the county, it's been through subdivision, it's been through the easement process. Uh, we checked all the boxes and done everything we're supposed to. I think it's definitely a hardship to re- ask to redesign the house to save a tree that. In my view, it's gonna be compromised during construction, anything that goes on there, if it already hasn't been by the disturbance vote by the. Uh, demolition permanent requirements.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so again, the, uh. Public comment period of the hearing is now completed and the record is closed. No new information shall be considered or submitted to the record after this point. So now, again, I will turn it over to. Now, distinguished council presidents, lead the discussion.
Okay, let's try and. Wrap this up. Um. My. Um. My thoughts are that we can actually. Defer decision and. Request that the contract can make some modifications. Propose some modifications, but. I'm curious to know what other folks thinking if they think that's a.
Well, well, why don't you? Why don't you, um. Make a motion? See if the tenants are interested in maybe the entitlement sufficient. Then if somebody second, so you can discuss that. Is that? Okay.
Um. I move that the council defer consideration of permanent applications submitted by David Kelly after David has got the help of the construction new home. Probably fifteen Cumberland Avenue. For the developer to. Propose. To to to. Reevaluate and propose. Modifications to the. Design of the garage and the construction process for the house. To reduce impact on existing trees or not.
Okay, is that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would just. Refer to it as a continuance of the hearing. For the limited purpose of. The applicant reevalu- reevaluating the design of the garage and the construction processes. With the. Goal of potentially saving a cherry tree.
Okay, sir, second.
Yes. Okay, just just to clarify, say the cherry tree in front, front and and one or more trees in the.
And that's trees number sixteen and seventeen, bash in the hollow and footprint of the proposed garage.
Okay, so Councilor Keller had seconded the same discussion.
Yeah, I cannot support that. Um, okay, we've heard from. Most civil engineer and common builder that the cherry tree is not savable, even with major redesign of. The house, which they're not prepared to. Um. The trees and footprint of the garage are in decline as been indicated. And they're not. I mean, the ash is a goner anyway. I've been told by. Free specialists to get rid of the ashes in my yard. They're perfectly healthy because of the European act for. Um, so that's gone, the goner, the holiday is sick and it's going to go to. So the you've also heard from civil engineer that even if you shrink the garage, probably the two trees are still could be in the way of the shrunk garage. So there's there's no point in doing that. Um, so. I really do not see any value to deferring, asking them to to reevaluate. The list can be done because it can't be done. This is what it involves, don't you? Um, and there's no point as in regarding the garage because the two trees are not worth saving. So I I I said, I'm not happy with this. I don't like the house. Um, but they've done tremendous work on the stormwater management plan. They really have. Um, and they are not asking for any variances at all. Um, so I think.
Okay, so further discussion. Well, we haven't given Shannon a chance. Unless.
Well, no, I mean, no, I think that, um. Yeah, I'm ready about.
Okay, all this favor. All this advice. Okay, thank you for the motion here is. To be continued. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Oh, and and oh, just a procedural matter to be clear, as the continued hearing, gonna take this next month. That's why I said. Well, that was probably implied, but just.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, next month, yeah. If you're ready to come back with any updates or thoughts.
What is the request?
Monitor. Okay, so they've considered for so much time spent. End of it tomorrow, we'll work the staff. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. The next item is public hearing motion to consider the adoption of a resolution establishing a twenty twenty four. Is there, there's one majority major. Is there a second?
Um. I sort of want to adjourn, but. Uh, is there any discussion on the resolution rules for that way to next one?
Is there? Is there? Your your motions are made within meetings. There are second.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So all this in favor? I have this.